Good evening and welcome to the November nineteenth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. First order business called to order starting with Mr. Shepherd.
Shepherd here.
Yes, President.
Ms. Succi here.
Capello here.
Tessie here.
Alan, President.
Let's go here. Also, we have town plan of Vanessa Price.
Anne?
And Jamie.
Zoning Administrator.
Jamie Jensen, zoning administrator, correct. Trying to which hat we had on tonight for Jamie. Item number three, reserve approval of the minutes from November sixth, twenty twenty four.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a change.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
What page?
Line seven eighty-six.
Seven eighty-six.
There was a vote. My, I listed as yea and I voted nay.
Seven eighty-six.
Yeah, that was granting the professional.
Right.
And I thought they have at least as much resources as a normal residence, so I voted no.
Okay, Mr. Matt Knapp had made the motion.
Second.
With amendments or corrections.
Roll call.
Shepherd, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Succi, aye.
Capello, aye.
Tessie, aye.
Alan, aye.
Okay, next item, item number four, the business may properly come before, come before the board. Pardon me, I have a little sore throat going on tonight. A proposed zoning amendments. You planning board drafted zoning amendments. This one?
Mr. Chairman, if I may address the board?
Please.
That's right. The, I know you guys have seen this one a lot. The ones that just are up for discussion tonight was number four. In reference to number four, here's the shoreline protection district for the septic system. I had the attorney review it and she proposed the language as you see here. I don't know if you would like to discuss it or if that's what your intent is for it or.
I think we had talked about discussing it, right?
Yeah, I think it's the changes she made are good, but I still like to discuss it.
Okay.
We're discussing her draft or?
Yeah, we can just go right to that one because I know that was the one that we were waiting to hear back from her and she gave us the.
If you look at the eleven point three parentheses two has exemptions for, you know, what's not a structure? I didn't understand why that was taken out.
Her notes.
On page four of the first document, if you look at page four, there's an eleven point three parentheses two is crossed out. And it was unlisted.
Here in letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
But she didn't put it back in. She didn't put it in either.
Eleven three two and eight increase.
Right here, John, see?
Yep.
That's, language has been taken out.
Yep.
I don't think we discussed that and I don't know why it was taken out.
Okay.
Would you like to keep that in?
I would.
Okay.
I would too, and I'd also say eleven three one, it talks about sheds and no permanent structures. I think walls would be considered permanent structure, yet you get approval from that from the state. So if you're trying to replace a wall on your beach or, you know, along your property. Sheds are also there, although I, I guess you don't need a building permit.
Because it's under two, under two square feet.
Right.
Yeah, so this doesn't, but this says any sheds.
Says any structure. Yeah, but it says structures and structures are defined somewhere else.
Okay.
Right, but a shed is defined, would be constitute a structure. Not under two hundred square feet. I think under the definition of structures, I think anything under two hundred square feet is not included, I don't think.
Well, it says by way of example, but not by way of limitation sheds.
That will say, if we leave that language in, sheds are exempted. So that's why I want to leave it in, plus docks and stuff like that. That, that clause says those are not, those are not covered by the statute, by this ordinance.
Right, I, I realize that there's a place where we do say that about sheds, but I don't know. This looks like, this is like an overlay of an overlay. You have the buffers, the wetland buffers, then you have this. You have, I mean, it just seems it's very complicated to understand. I'm not sure how we distinguish. A shed is available in everywhere but here?
Well, you, you can put a shed in a buffer zone, but it's buffer too.
Yeah, as long as it's on pole mounted, in other words, it's up on rocks or something.
This doesn't even give you that ability, but seventy-five feet.
The exemption I want to put back in does give you that, Scott, that's why I'm putting it back in. They took it out, I'm, I'm asking why they took it out.
I don't know.
So you would consider a structure that's customarily associated with recreation use of water?
Yeah. It's covered. Yeah. And the other thing, which is, she didn't change it, but I guess I'm questioning it. Any area within seventy-five feet of a shoreline of a, any year-round stream or any lake or pond over two acres. So if I have a little, you know, spring-fed stream coming down my property that's six inches wide, but it's all year-round, are we covering that? That seems to me that a little bit of an overreach. You know, I, I would have some definite, something where it's got to be some, you know, five feet wide, ten feet wide, something significant, otherwise I, I mean, I just think it's, I don't know why we're doing that, and also.
I think that language mimics the state language.
Yeah.
Sorry. That, that language is something that mimic the state language, that's why it's in there. If you go to the D E S website and look at their regulations for shoreline setbacks, it describes year-round lakes and streams of certain sizes.
Yeah, but this is our own. And we can do whatever. I think a little six-inch stream that's year-round should not be covered on this, should not be something that you gotta, you can't build within seventy-five feet of. That's my point, I think that's too much. And I think also the two acres, I'm kind of questioning that too, if, let's say I own all the property around the two acres, it's, it's a private body of water. Are you saying I can't build within that, close to that? You know, I'm, I'm thinking maybe it should be a, can't be pro, private, it's a public body of water. You know, something like that, I mean, if I own all the property around a, a little, a two-point-one acre pond, it's mine. You're telling me I can't build within seventy-five feet of that?
If, if the purpose is to protect the water, whether it's yours or public water, yes, it would be the intention to protect all waters, not just, not yours.
Point is, I think here, I think we're rejecting public waters here. That's what I think we're doing. So I think, I question whether that's.
So you're thinking it should cover only great ponds, anything over ten acres, which is the state owns automatically.
Yeah.
No matter where they are.
Yeah. Yeah.
But you think this is right from the regulations? The D E S regulations?
I was gonna try and bring it, I believe it's similar, I guess I'm, have to back up and ask, what was the deficiency we were trying to correct?
I want to put a width on the year-round stream of something.
Excuse me?
A, a width, it's got to be at least.
Right, but even changing the, the whole thing altogether, I guess I was.
Well, I just want to change the definition.
Something new, and then Laura reviewed it. She was proposing rewriting that whole section.
It's just that one, that one clause.
Eleven two one.
Eleven two parentheses one. Just adding something that says year-round stream of over four feet or something. Rather than, you know, two inches.
Want to put this off till we get some research on this?
Yeah, um, tell me your questions and then I can reach back to her to.
I want to put, um.
Because you said for eleven.
Some size on the stream. Year-round stream. Minimum size. I don't want to regulate anything that's under a foot, for example, I, it's got to be at least five feet in my mind, or something like that. It's got to be a stream, not, not a spring-fed, you know, six-inch thing. And on the ponds, I am with John on ten acres. If it, if over ten acres becomes a public, a, you know, state-owned body of water, then I think ten acres should be the, the limit, not two.
And then she will determine if this is out of the D E S.
Yeah, so sheds and.
Go back to what?
There.
Because when I was reading it, like, no structure of any type, including by way of example and not by way of limit, limitation. And then when I see buildings, garages, sheds, parking areas, and when I look at the definition for structures, it says anything constructed, installed, placed or erected, whether above or below grade unless otherwise stated in the ordinance, the following structures are exempt from building permit requirements set in section fifteen point four and shall not be construed as structures for the purpose of setback requirements, but shall so be construed for all other purposes. So that's my concern, is it says for all other purposes, which means in the zoning ordinance, I read that as it's applicable now, when you, when you look at this setback. Right, but that's why I want the exemption in there, where it, it takes sheds. It allows you to put sheds in the seventy-five feet. We took that out and then you're in that gray area that you're worried about. I think put it back in. Going backwards, by the way, but.
The, the state regulations on the seventy-five feet are going to supersede ours and there, you have to get a, I can make people get a state permit to put a shed within two fifty of the shoreline, because the state regulates it, I mean, you can be.
The state is what, they're really got, their shoreline is like a hundred or two hundred.
Two fifty is the shoreline protection.
And they're, and they really, they're really triggered by disturbance of soils and stuff, so it's, it's not just structures, it's disturbance of soil. So you go through the checklist, you got to disturb like a thousand square feet of.
I think they do say nothing within seventy-five feet, don't they? Or some.
You can put your house in seventy-five.
I can, uh, I can share the shoreline accessory structure from D E S that allows, it does, it's, their, their regulation says accessory structures are detached from primary structures but built with a permanent location on or in the ground. They provide functions that complement those of primary structure but are less essential to the overall use of the property. Paths, driveways, patios, tennis courts, sheds, detached garage, retaining walls, et cetera. Attached decks are considered primary, primary structure, water-dependent structures, and then some accessory structures also qualify as water access structures under straight wetland rules. As used here, water access structures mean structures without roof or cover regulated under the state.
Yeah, but my, my point though, Jamie, is that you can build within the Shoreline Escrow Act under the state, it just depends, what triggers the requirement for permit is, is basically.
The waterfront buffer is fifty feet for location, size of accessory structures within the waterfront buffer. So the state does fifty feet.
If they have a shoreline, if they have a shoreline thing, you need a permit if it's more than that. It's, um, and it depends on how much soil you.
It's incremental, it's not, so the structures, it's incremental, so the first fifty feet, if you want a shed in there or a water access structure, they have different rules than they do at two fifty.
I mean, you can do a beach, you can do.
You can do a step beach, you can't do a perched beach.
Yeah, you can do a perch.
Step beach, yeah, I call it step.
Did they mention at all, um, stream or lake pond over two acres?
Um, they're, the, the language that they use is, um, uh, fourth order or higher, year-round flowing water, streams and ritter, rivers of fourth order of, or higher.
Well, that clarifies it.
And then they have a list.
What does fourth order or higher mean?
Uh, designated rivers. How, a, a stream order is a classification system of all streams and rivers. The small streams, which have no other streams feeding them, are first-order streams. When two first-order streams merge, they form a second-order stream, continuing the ordering system. Two second orders being merged, a larger third-order stream, um, so that's how they classify it.
You were talking about a first-order stream.
Yeah.
Yes.
And they're saying fourth order. Well, well, let me ask you a question. When you say fourth order or higher, are you talking more than four inputs or are you talking, does, which way does higher flow in the order?
Four is higher. So one would be the start that combines into a two. Two ones make a two, and one can flow into a three, and three is two and four. Four is the bigger one.
We can't say fourth order because no one knows what that means, so we got to say, what does that mean in, in, in understandable language? What can we put in that is, is, you know, basically is kind of the same, but is real English?
A single stream without tributaries?
I, I still, I want to get back to size, it's got to be something, I mean, I think about it in Italy, that they do, you know, that people build the whole courtyard around these little streams they do.
Yeah, but the problem with that is streams, you know, they get bigger when it rains and it's.
And if they have wetland buffers, you're going to have wetlands and buffers to those streams.
It's not like five feet all the way over.
I'm open to another definition, but I'm, you know. Trickle is not working for me, John, is what I'm saying.
I'm trying to help, but it's not obvious.
You, you, you give me, you know, the, the version of the question.
Does it mention anything about the seventy, the seventy-five feet is the town regulation?
Correct.
So, we know what that is. They don't mention two acres at all for ponds.
Uh, ten. Lakes, ponds and a pond that's greater than ten.
I love ten.
How many want to put ten in?
Let's put ten, that travels out. Now we got to figure out how, what a string means.
Well.
I don't want to.
Year-round stream.
Sorry, says, says it, I don't really.
Year-round stream, so it's not an intermittent stream, which you see in the maps, you know.
I, I may just want to say that's, you know, minimum of two feet wide or something, something that's not six inches or.
How can you, I mean, it depends on.
Well, the minimum would be at the low flow.
Well, and, so you say year-round, but if you look at our definition of stream, it specifically says it may dry up, but it has a defined channel bed. So now you're splitting hairs by saying, well, that's still year-round, even though it may dry up. I mean, are you talking flow year-round? You're getting into some really gray language with that.
Well, I think this one, the way it reads now, it's flow all year round, I mean, that's the way, the way I interpret it.
Continuous flow.
But once again, if it's continuous flow of a couple inches, I don't, I don't think that should be regulated. Worried about, if worried about, you know, construction within some stream, it's got to be, it's got to, you know, it's got to be significant other worry about, you know, erosion getting into it and that kind of stuff. Little stream that.
Right.
I don't, I don't really. Little spring-fed stream that, you know, trickle all year round.
So is the purpose of this really about the septic system? Is that ultimately what this is for?
Well, this is, no, this, this is existing language that I'm questioning, so this is even before we get to the septic part.
So, I don't think she rewrote anything, she just moved it.
No, it's existing language, it's existing language.
Okay.
So I'm questioning existing language.
Can you maybe elaborate on a problem that's come up from the existing language that had to go to the Z B A or an issue that's created that we're trying to solve? Because that's where I'm falling short on a, a problem we're trying to fix for language that would.
I'm just, she'll be re-regulating a little stream that's year-round. That's where, that's all I'm asking. Is that what, is that what we're trying to do? I'm thinking, no, that's not what we're trying to do. So therefore, I'm trying to fix it right now. We can kick it down the road and fix it later, but I'm saying, are we, do we want to regulate the year-round streams that, that trickle all year round? Is that what we're trying to do? And if not, we should change the language, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I, I see your point now, and I, I guess I don't have a feeling one way or another. I can't recall, but I haven't been here long enough, probably, to have every example of where that would be an issue that if wetland didn't surround that little stream, that the wetland and the wetland buffer came into consideration for the fifty-foot setback. And, you know, that could be a zoning tidbit that gets missed from a stream, you know, and we look at the wetland buffer setbacks.
If you take stream out, you're taking the Eisen Glass River out too.
That's done separately, John. They have a separate.
Uh, Eisen Glass has its own section.
Yeah, it's got, it's a hundred feet for the Eisen Glass.
Right.
That's true, that is a special thing.
I mean, if you want to kick, what's the consensus, want to kick it down the road or you want to fix it now?
I like the language.
Like it?
I'm with you, Ron, but I, I don't know how we address it.
Don't have any easy things right now, so you want to kick it down the road?
I mean, do you just call it like a, a fourth order, you know, in relation to fourth-order streams and make a reference to the state zoning?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Let's do that.
I, I would say fourth-order stream as defined by state.
Take, take out the year-round and say fourth-order stream. Take out the year-round and just say fourth-order stream. Yeah, I think that's better. Don't know what it means, but at least we got it covered.
Well, I mean. And I would imagine that was abbreviated language, that it was supposed to mimic that.
Well, we could put in, you know, parentheses, C state regulations or something like.
Yeah.
Jamie, do you have the exact statute that we could?
For, uh, yes, for the D E S.
Yeah. Let's put that in parentheses so they can find the reference.
No, I just click it. The shoreline water, RSA four eighty-three B would be the Shoreline Water Quality Protection Act.
Would you say it was for what?
Four eighty-three B.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're changing the eleven point two parentheses one, any area within seventy-five feet of the shoreline of any fourth order.
Stream.
Stream. See RSA four thirty-eight B as amended.
Or a lake or pond over ten acres.
Yeah, or any lake or pond over ten acres. Okay.
And the new stuff, I don't have a problem with.
So eleven three one, how about just adding on there? No structure of any type by way of example or not by limitation. Building garages, sheds, parking lots and driveways may be constructed on any property unless you have a permit from the D E S, without a permit from the D E S. They're just saying nothing's allowed there unless you can get a permit from the D E S.
Is, is it, are they items D E S would issue a permit on? Because if you go to D E S for a permit and they're like, you don't need a permit for this, basically what you're just getting is a letter from them saying, I don't need a permit for this, and then you bring that back and that's.
Well, you need a permit for a dock. You need a permit for sand, you need a permit for retaining walls.
You need a permit for sand.
Yeah, you do, every six years you have to get.
As long as I go in the water, you don't need a, as long as I go in the water, you don't need a permit for sand.
Yeah, but that's what we're talking about next to water, right?
Ron stops at the water line so he doesn't get a permit and just blows in. Beach wash in is very expensive.
You have to clean your feet off the sand before you step into the water.
We got into a lot of trouble for doing sand without a permit.
Yeah.
Hey, my father-in-law used to mow the lily pads. He bought a mower on his boat. We solved the problem with little kids and their pails and shuttles.
Yeah.
At the time.
Shawshank Redemption style.
Can we show them that movie when they turn three?
Um.
Okay.
So are we, are we, are we just tweaking that to say, you know, unless the state permit is received, achieved, or?
Well, there are some things you can do that don't require a state permit.
Well, that's what we are saying.
Yeah, I agree with you, so.
We're saying you can't do it unless you've received a state permit.
What if you don't require a state permit? So you haven't got one because you.
What would you do?
If required.
What would you do?
You've received a exemption.
I don't think you need a permit for a shed.
I make people.
But this doesn't, the way I read this.
If they want to put it within the fifty feet, you need a state permit.
But it, within seventy-five feet, you don't need it. You know, within that two hundred, two fifty, it's, it's ground disturbance that requires, that triggers a permit. There's a checklist you can go through, unless, they, on the state website, there, there's a checklist you can read and it'll tell you if you need one or not. But you can do a lot of things within that shoreline that don't require any permit.
Can we try to just kick this back and ask you all to try to figure out how to synchronize this, I guess, with the?
Well, let's, let's start, let's put the exemption back in, and if we want to tweak it, later on, we can tweak it, but it was taken out, I don't know why we took it out. So my, my first thing is, don't take it out. That, and if we want to tweak it later on, we can tweak it later on. I want, um.
Two one.
Eleven three parentheses two to be, leave it in.
But the other one's okay to take out.
One other one to take out?
Yep.
Okay.
This is exemption to ours, but it's sort of, if people are reading this and looking at it, would they recognize that they have to go to D E S? Docks, floats, other structures.
So we don't permit docks and stuff, you know, from the building department, we wouldn't permit those, so we would have no notification that that's being done. So it's on the property owner to, to follow the right steps. If someone comes in and wants a shed or a garage or an addition and it's within two fifty, I may get a letter from D E S saying that they're approved to do such. Whether, I know it's doable or not, I let D E S defer on each and every case because I think it's just prudent. So, that's how I've been operating. But our zoning says, you know, you don't need a permit for a shed, so there's probably numerous people that put sheds where they shouldn't, but, you know, that's a different, different issue. You know.
Isn't it, you need administrative permit from you, don't you, for a shed?
Uh, it says the, the administrative permit, if, you know, not knowing the exact language, if it's. But it's not required, it's recommended if in wetlands.
Yeah, it just says sheds may require.
Yeah.
An administrative zoning permit.
If I look on the map and there's no wetlands and they're in the middle and, you know, no, no, nowhere close to but wetlands, I'm, I don't go out there and check where they want to put it. Most people don't ask, but if it's close, it's on the water, if it's close to known wetland, then we'll go out there and look at it, and stake it out.
Yeah, I guess my thing is I'm, we're just putting in a retaining wall, repairing it, and that would be illegal under this, even though we have, as I read it.
You're repairing an existing one?
Yeah, and extending it a little bit.
Be an exception.
But again, it's, it's what D E S, I think D E S would allow us and does allow us to put on.
Yeah.
A perched beach, so the sand doesn't run down. So, again, if D E S permits it, I don't think we should say you, you can't.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Okay, so to reel us back in, um.
Want to go to nine now?
Or can we just visit this one more time to make sure I understand? So we're moving, we're moving, do we have a consensus to move forward with the changes for eleven point two one? Keeping eleven two parentheses two. And then, um, the new language for eleven three one and two. And putting back in the previous eleven point three, I hope everybody's willing to move this, parentheses two, exemptions to setback provisions, et cetera. Um, I'll put that as number three under here. That's what I got? Yes, okay. Um, does the board, I hear one person on the fence, but is there a consensus you want to move this forward?
Move it or just consensus?
Um. You can vote on it, it's fine.
Motion?
Which one, what do we vote?
Which one?
Basically, to move the whole, um, I'm referencing it as zoning article for number four, the shoreline protection district. Have it labeled as septic system. The proposed language, everything in red, to be added and everything struck through to be omitted, except as how we discussed it.
Just for my own clarity, sorry.
Yeah.
How is this, how, how is the septic system approval different than what it is now? Because I, I was struggling with that, I'm like, well, it already has to be approved by N H D E S and in pursuant to the RSA, so where is it?
You had a copy of the legislation.
Yeah, there's a new House Bill one 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 three, which now triggers this same language if the house is being sold.
Right, and so this is if you're updating it.
This is basically, yes, so now if you can update and require a building permit.
Right.
This is triggering the same language for Barrington.
Right.
It's same. It's kind of, uh, along the lines of the House Bill, but it's a little bit different.
Yeah, I know, Laura had made comment on it, that, um, you know, I don't think the amendment really has anything to do with House Bill one 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 three other than borrow some of the same language that the statute uses.
Yeah.
And she had concern about the rational basis between the increase in living space of a hundred square feet, which in her statement was pretty minimal, and the requirement for that entire septic system to be replaced before a C O is issued.
I mean, you got to pick a number, a hundred square feet mirrors the, um, the selectman policy for the ten percent for the road. So that's why I used a hundred. That's the same trigger than the ten percent for the, uh, in the class six private road policy.
True, for the private road, but I don't know.
No, no, but that's.
You just took that ten percent.
The hundred feet is, what, what triggers it on that? So I figured that'd be the trigger here, just to be consistent. What is it? That's where I pulled it from.
Gotcha. Well, that's, I was trying to figure out where a hundred square feet came in from.
That's where it came from.
After, and I had read Laura's notes, so I was like, okay, you know, she's the one that tends to have to get up and defend some of these, and as much as Laura and I tend to disagree about things, I, I do try to respect like, okay, where's she coming from with it?
Well, but she didn't give a, she didn't give, she didn't give a number. You know what I mean? So you gotta pick a number, so, you know.
Right.
What's the, what's the number?
The state law says any.
The hundred square feet is pretty much a bedroom.
Hang on, state law says. The state law, I read the state law for water management protection for water pollution and wastewater disposal. Prior to expanding any structure or any change in use which would increase the load on a sewage disposal system, the owner of such structure shall submit an application for approval of the sewage disposal system to the department. Application for the approval shall include one of the following. Evidence that the existing sewage disposal system meets the requirements of the department, um, or the town, whichever is more strict. Design for a new system which meets the requirement of the department for intended use of the town's minimum standards or occupancy, whichever is more stringent. Part two, parents say no construction operation approval shall be required from the department prior to expanding, relocating, or replacing a structure if it does not increase the load. So if, if there's no load, you wouldn't have to. And then, um, if the lot is served by a sewage disposal system that received construction approval from the department within twenty years of the date of issuance of the building permit, if it throws expansion, relocation, or replacement, or if you're on a lot that is five acres or more in size and is served by a sewage disposal system that receives construction and operation approval from the department. Off-site effluents, um, or non-residential are the other two things. So anybody that comes in to expand their structure, the use on their structure, if, if it's more than twenty years old and they're not on five acres, they have to get a design for a new system. If that, when they're doing that design, if it's found that it's in failure, it has to be replaced.
Well, is that true? Because they said anything that's going to increase the load on the septic in its bedrooms that increase load.
Right.
So if they're putting a twelve by twelve living room on, that's not increasing the load.
Right.
But you're really not allowed to construct close to the wetlands anyway, right? So you can't increase the footprint of your house. I think you can only go up.
No, no, there, there have been cases where we have had folks come in in increased density into the wetland area.
Is that, should we?
One I can think of, it was less than three thousand square feet.
It, it was, which is how they did it, part of that, and what they ended up doing was going up and adding more space above it. So they did, they did like just shy of the three thousand square foot or right at the three thousand square foot requirement there, and then went to multi-story.
But the, thinking of the segment policy.
Three thousand square foot, that's a whole house by itself.
Wrong, there's no hundred feet in the policy. Oh, there is? No. You sure? A hundred percent. It's just added living space. Added living space? There's no threshold. Those hundred feet. There, there's a threshold defining living space as having seven or more square feet that's seven feet higher of ceiling. Uh, but that is, it's still not a hundred, and that's any added living space. That just says that if there's, if there's like a smoke area, uh, but yeah, there's no. Trying to decide with a look at the policy here.
I trust you, but.
Let's not digress, you're, let's, um.
But I will say, hundred square feet is a bedroom, so if.
That's a small bedroom.
All right, we done discussing this?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to move this, uh?
Yes.
Forward.
Forward to.
Second. Are we leaving the hundred square, sorry, are we leaving the hundred square feet or should we just say any increase of living space? Because that seems to align with what the actual, all our policies are.
I agree with you.
I'm okay with that.
Any increase of living space.
Okay.
Eleven point three, print these two.
Now, before we vote on this, I just want to point out, this is not a small thing. You know, people come in and they, the ten percent, and they're unhappy. And, and sometimes we haven't hung tough on the ten percent, you know, well, my house, you know, and I'm only putting in and, you know, we've rolled over. This, a septic system on top of that, this is not a small thing. So I'm in favor of it, but I want to point out it for everybody, you know, we're gonna have people come in here and they're not going to be happy about, you know, ten percent plus, you know, I got you a septic, it's, it's a big hit.
The other hand of that, if we have failing septic systems and we have cyanobacterial water that's in the whole lake, that's costly.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, that's a contest you always have, people who want to have to spend forty thousand bucks to fix something. But then they want the town or others to pay to clear up, uh, mill oil or cyanobacterias.
Is there a problem with kicking this down the road and just say, let's, I'd rather see what the final wording looks like, we do that?
Well, it's at the final wording, but we just gotta change any increase in living space, this is the final wording.
Yeah, so we're just taking out the hundred square feet.
Yeah, but then we're still left with the retaining walls and sheds and.
Well, it's a septic language, you know, we want to hear the walls and sheds, that's separate from the septic system, so let's stay on point. Um, we're talking about that now. And you vote on it yes or no?
Let's.
And everybody has to agree.
I would, I would get rid of the.
We're voting to postpone it, that's what we're voting.
I would change the date, the eighty-nine date to twenty years.
You want to do this language?
Go forward, just say any increase, other than that, we're.
Okay, I thought maybe you want to run it by the attorney one more time.
Jamie, what year were you saying?
Uh, well, I would mimic the language, the twenty-year land, twenty years from, instead of nineteen eighty-nine. You know, as, as you move forward in time.
Nineteen eighty-nine came from the House Bill.
That's taken out.
That's the new language.
Oh, is.
Yeah.
Okay, so she proposed taking all of this out originally, and all the red stuff is new to replace it. They're putting this back in.
But he's got the eighty-nine in there, so that's why I was, I just didn't know if he wanted to go with the twenty years to match the state, you know, as.
Well, the House.
Five years from now.
I took that from the House Bill.
Yeah.
So it's the same as the House Bill.
It says that in the House Bill.
Yeah, it does, yeah. So.
I want to read it, so everybody's clear what it sounds like.
All right. No structure of any type, including by way of example, that's, I'll leave that out. Any increase of, uh, any increase of living space, so we're not changing the hundred square feet to any increase of living space. Or potential living space defined at seven feet from floor to the bottom of the joist, where any part of the system is located in the district shall require the following. A, if the existing septic system is not approved by, uh, New Hampshire D E S per RSA four eighty-five, uh, dash A dash twenty-nine, or the department approval was issued prior to September first, nineteen eighty-nine, an evaluation must be performed by a New Hampshire licensed septic designer or evaluator to determine the elevation of the bottom of the septic system of the effluent disposal system relative to the seasonal high water levels. In the event the system is determined to be in failure, as defined in RSA four eighty-five dash A dash dot two, uh, four, the system shall be replaced before a given occupancy can be issued. That's the language we vote, that's the language we're voting on.
And that's eleven, um, three, two.
Well, we don't know.
And we're not voting yet on eleven three one, right?
Well, yeah, he also wants to take out, let, put back in what was eleven three two.
Yeah.
Right, so this would be, I think that's why it's nice to stick, I, I'm fine with what that proposal is for that section, but before voting on it all, we should probably read the final text, right?
And I think.
That is the final language.
I think forty-five twenty-nine is not the right site for, that's for subdivisions, um, septic's for subdivision, they think.
That's what's in the House Bill, so that's, I didn't, I didn't check it, so I just took it from the House. I just took it from the House Bill, Jamie, so.
And under explanation, it says they feel that the town's requirements should match those of the state.
The intent of the state, it should be the intent of the state.
Hey, I'm just trying to write it.
No regulations for people that are just doing additional living space.
It does, but it, but right now, the, our regulations just call for a design to be done, doesn't require anything to be done. So if you're doing that now, design has to be done, and to me, what does that do for the environment?
Well, it. But your des, your design has to be done to show that the site can handle it, but if your site is not in failure, then there's really no need to replace it at that point in time.
Right, this requires an evaluation, see if it is in failure, that's all it's saying.
Right, I'm not.
So if it's in failure, it has to be replaced, but only if it's in failure.
That's the case anyway, if your septic is reported in failure, you have ninety days.
Thirty days to do something.
We don't have that language.
Make a plan.
You, you don't have to have it, that's state language, the state requires that.
But what, the state requires it.
For expansion of any structure that increases load.
Yeah, but right now, so our, our language should mirror that, so that if you're expanding, if we get a building permit in a C O O, we should also do the same thing, should inspect the system, see if it's in failure, if it's in failure, you should replace it.
Right, so if someone's coming in for a garage, like you've described, with potential living space above, now you, you want them to get a new septic design?
I want them to check the system, make sure it's functioning. If it's not functioning, then they should replace it.
But this is just in the, the seventy-five feet or whatever it is.
Which none of this reflects what the state does, because the state doesn't require it.
The state does, the, the state shoreline is two fifty, I think. Theirs is different.
Shoreline, it's different.
The purpose of this is you're just.
So we're not reflecting what the state wants. If, in Jamie's example, if you went for a permit for a garage and you're not increasing load, the state's not going to require.
But we.
An inspection and or.
We did the same, this is what we talked about in the second policy, because you build it, it's not living space now, but it's, you know, we have a lot of garages that there's space above it, you know it's going to be turning into A D O, A D U down the road, you know.
But when they do that, they would have to permit it at that time. Here's the problem with kind of what you're proposing. It's the idea of getting a septic system on file makes sense. The problem is you go do that and it's only valid for two years?
I think four.
It's, okay, four years, so that design's valid for four years, so say you, you prove that you can do it, but you don't do anything beyond it, you gotta go through that process all over again four years later to have that plan recertified to go do that work. You're just costing people money.
So why would you do it if you're not planning to do the work right away?
But that's, Ron is, but you wouldn't, but what Ron is saying is you have to do that. Like, he's proposing that you have to go have that in place, even though you're saying.
So what we do the following, appoint two people or more as a subcommittee to get some language that we can bring back that mirrors the effect, the, uh, state language in the town regulations, so it seems we're just going back and forth.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, I'm just, when you look at it, there's, you, you're, you're just setting people up to go spend a pile of money.
We'll have some consensus, and are you interested, Ron, in, in doing that?
I feel sure, sure.
Wells would want to join.
Well, do you want me to work with?
I'll join you.
Okay. Um, oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, the only thing I would say is, ask Laura about if it's got to go to the N H B O A, because it was kind of, it'd be tied to building permits, and like, that, that new state law says you can't, um, you can adopt different building codes, but it's got to go through the committee to get approved. So I don't know if that would fall into that criteria, or if this could stand a zone anywhere.
That's how much of a planner.
Depends when you want to have this meeting, because that's going to be public now, since there's two members. Um, I'm not going to be here next week, so just let you guys know, so.
I thought it was three or more.
Is it three or more?
Three or more.
Three or more.
Four.
Four.
One sec.
Yeah, so two's fine.
Okay. Let me know what you decide.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
How about, how about this? I will send the both of you.
Anybody else want to be a member, anybody else want to be part of this committee, we can do three.
I don't have any time, I'm like buried.
We, how about I put the two, uh, the revisions and send it to both of you guys, and then you guys. Be hashed out and we'll bring it back.
Run it by lawyer.
Jamie, if you have any input, they can ask you for, uh.
Well, we'll do it here, and we'll get, hopefully you, you, you can be involved.
Okay. Why don't you paddle across the lake and we can do it at the lake?
So we're gonna bump number nine.
The lake I'm trying to protect.
Number four.
Number four, we're going to nine finally.
John, before we go to nine, just out of respect, you got the consultant here, is there any benefit to doing the other ones?
Oh, I didn't realize he was up there.
Um, we can, the re, I wanted to look at number, um, nine and four, because they were in relation to the conservation subdivision. Um, I'm sorry, not number nine, number.
That's a better.
Number eight, I apologize, number eight, um, I know that we had put this forward, um, wanted to pause on number eight to move that forward, as well as, um, Andy had brought something up at the last meeting, which is number ten. Those are both in reference to the conservation subdivisions. Um, and those, I wanted to hold to hear from the consultant, um, before we move forward with those, and we can table the other two later, because they're, um, just definitions. So Steve, um, I'll turn over to you, I guess.
Yeah, I, I'd like to say.
Or to Connor.
Oh, good.
Sure.
I mean, I think it just deserve, I think the process deserves some introduction. So the, um, as most of you know, some of you because you were part of the process, but the select board had, through their strategic planning process, identified a lot of, um, items in the future of the town that are impacted by land use regulations. And that isn't the select board's purview per se, but those, you know, achieving the goals of the town is what their objective is, right? And so they got together, the select board did, with the subcommittee of the planning board, and that group worked over a few meetings to, to kind of hash out some of those priorities and how to accomplish those priorities. So that process, and I know that you all have gotten updates through the process, but those, um, that process led us to advertising, uh, requests for qualifications and hiring a team of consultants to help us achieve. And I think the last forty-five minutes is an excellent example. This group, it, the, this group doesn't need to design the how to accomplish something, right? This group needs to identify what the objective is, and through professional staff or legal counsel or consultants, figure out how to best accomplish that, right? And so that's what we've gone through with this process. Uh, the group of the select board and the, uh, planning board subcommittee identified what the priorities were to achieve components of our master plan, preserve our rural character, and address some of the feedback from residents about development in town. And so there's kind of two phases of the work of the consultant, but the first phase really focused on conservation subdivisions. And what component of those, uh, or what components of our regulations relative to conservation subdivisions could be adjusted to better achieve the vision of the master plan, what residents want to see. So it's a really exciting project, the select board and the planning board subcommittee, um, are, I think, generally pretty happy with what the consultants have done. Um, they've updated it some, so, uh, with us is Steve Whitman from Resilience Planning and Design. And so he's going to go through, you have in your packet, um, the specific recommendations, um, and the purpose. And the only last thing that I want to say is, we know that the planning board had concurrently also been considering changes to conservation subdivision regulations to accomplish some of the same goals. And what we talked about with the planning, or with the select board and the planning board subcommittee is that this is maybe a more, uh, professional and complete way to accomplish those same goals than what the planning board arrived at on its own. Not that what the planning board was originally recommending would, not that that wouldn't work, but this may be more effective in accomplishing the true goals. And I think that's the value of having consultants with land use regulation experience across the state and a command of what it takes to, um, influence development in, to accomplish specific, uh, goals or priorities. Um, so I'll turn over to Steve, but I'll stay here, and you can follow along with your, um, with the document, uh, the deliverable that Steve and the rest of the consultant team put together.
That was great, thank you Connor. Um, hello, everybody, Steve Whitman, Resilience Planning and Design. Uh, this project, we're working on this first phase that Connor talked about. Uh, Mark Fugere has been involved in the committee meetings as well, but he couldn't be here tonight, he had a already scheduled meeting. So what I'll do is, I'll just go through the ten-page document you have, a kind of a high level, so that you can ask me questions and I can hear your conversation, does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
I have, I have no attempt to actually read you the document, but, um, there were three big items that were flagged for us to look at, and I, the first two items on the first page, I just wanted to highlight first. Um, Barrington's doing exceptionally well overall with this regulation. I think what Mark and I see with similar regulations in other communities is actually you're getting more developer participation than most communities get with the use of a conservation subdivision. And some of the objection we've heard related to community charact- And some of the objection we've heard related to community character and just kind of the, the visual, um, impact of new development is understandable from a residence, uh, you know, residence perspective. And so a lot of our focus in the, in the third item with the suggested regulatory changes is trying to mitigate that. And it's trying to mitigate that with just some changes to your existing regulations that focus on design issues. And then the last piece is a question about whether or not the ordinance should be required or continue to be an option and incentivized. And we don't see a need for you to change your operation. Uh, we think you should continue to have it as an option. Um, some incentive would be good. And some really clear design alternatives could be helpful to get you closer to what you actually asked for in your subdivision regulations. There seems to be a little bit of a departure from the developments that are happening and what you ask for in your, in your figures in the subdivision regulations. So I'll just touch on, um, starting on page three, um, we kind of put these into like issues that we're trying to address within the subtext of the ordinance. So the first thing, to take a more holistic approach with the applicant from the very beginning to kind of get at what Connor was saying, just, it's not that what you're proposing couldn't be effective. It could. I don't think you need to do both, uh, change lot size and setbacks and add design, um, additional design requirements. But having a design review, review phase upfront, what's really clear to the applicant, the developer, what you're trying to accomplish and what flexibility they have in using this tool would be beneficial. And so that's identified in pages three and four and five. Um, the second part, and this came right out of your subdivision regulations, um, you talk about grouping home sites in smaller numbers. And yet the developments we toured with Connor are not that. Um, they're kind of bigger, more suburban in scale, lot after lot. Um, you can picture them. I think that's some of what we're hearing has been the pushback from residents. Um, so we talked about four to six adjoining units and using the open space that's part of the development to actually break up the developed portions into these smaller groupings. And so that was really the approach used under issue two. Issue three was setbacks and buffering. So a much bigger vegetated setback from existing roads so that the visual from the road, when you're going down a rural road in Barrington, continues to be primarily a rural experience. And so doing that and continuing to make sure there's adequate screening, um, of the new development from the roads. And then, as I mentioned, issue four was really a question of, you know, should this continue to be an option or should it be a requirement? One of our notes in here is actually more of a caution. It seems like what you have is working. It seems like if you could make some design-related improvements to get a better end product on future developments, that would be of a benefit. But I would be careful not to make it more onerous and lose interest from developers because it seems like you've been effective at both balancing your new development and conservation. With that, I will pause because you got, all may have questions and observations you want to share with each other.
Questions?
I don't.
Well, you do, so.
So just, uh, in general, a couple of things that stood out to me in issue two, when I, when I looked at the group sizing where it says four to six units, I'm assuming we would want to limit that to four units because that would align with everything else we've talked about in our regulation. And we're saying that we don't want housing stock of more than four units. So the cluster stock, I would assume is the same way.
Right.
The other item that really stood, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just to clarify, it's not four units within a structure. It's four adjacent units, four single-family units.
Single-family homes.
Right. Okay.
And the subcommittee.
It's within a one single building. It's a cluster.
Right, in the cluster.
The subcommittee and the select board felt like four is a pretty good number also. Um, it, groupings of four. And the best example of that is like Village Place, not the first section, but like when you're, or the first section from Route nine. But when you come up the hill, those homes are clustered in groups of two, three and four, kind of like in a line. And then separated with natural vegetation otherwise, it gives a lot different look and feel than what you have back here. Or even like, uh, in, in, um, what we'll see in the Young Road development, which was recently approved.
Right. And, and what stood out, it just said adjoining units. So when I looked at that, I'm like, okay, that, that means when I read adjoining, it's together. Um, so. Right, but that's not how it's defined here. So I, I would just be careful of that. The other part was.
It's sorry, it should be like adjacent parcels.
We should, that should be cleaned up to reflect that.
Sure. Yep.
The other item that really stuck out, stood out to me was six point four, um, determining permit density. And there's this, um, reference to where it says the permit density of dwelling units for conservation subdivisions may exceed the density of the dwelling unit. And it, and it has this option for a ten percent increase. And it references the trail network and interconnectivity. Would, why would we do it that way as opposed to just write that into our regulation? Because when I look at this, a developer wants the conservation subdivision over a traditional, over a traditional subdivision because their infrastructure costs are halved at best. Like they're always going to gear to this option. So why would I give them additional density?
Excellent question, Steve. You want to start?
Yeah. So we had a conversation at the last subcommittee meeting about this, and there are some things it sounds like the town's trying to do from a trail interconnectivity and public access perspective that may be going beyond what you want to require a developer to do. So this would be more to, it's the carrot approach to give them an incentive, to give them a little bit of a density increase. Ten percent, um, is not a big density increase. A lot of towns allow up to thirty or more, uh, percent bonuses for density increase. Um, and part of it is they're not getting, as you said, they're not getting the, uh, results from developers you're getting, but that's all I can offer right now.
And I think part of the challenge that, that we were facing, and so, so the entire planning board knows, earlier this year, the select board convened a trail interconnectivity stakeholder group. And that group has been trying to figure out how we make sure that we may establish and maintain public access and trail interconnectivity throughout town. And my understanding, and Steve, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that with the property rights that exist, the property right laws that exist in the state of New Hampshire, there is a limit to what we can require. And a good example of that is like with an open space subdivision, we can't require public access, right? So we can, the, we, our regulations can encourage it and, but they, they can make the decision that it's only open to the residents of that community, for example. Now, the town conservation commission may not take an easement on the property or take, the town may not take ownership of the property, but they have other options to conserve that property other than just the town. And so that's where, if we don't have the ability to use a stick, using a carrot to say, if you will do this, right? Like one of the proposals from the planning board was to say that it has to be over for public access. Our understanding is you can't do that, but if you incentivize it and you give it an option, if you do this, well, you'll get a ten percent bonus density. Yes, that's, that's extra density in a time when that isn't a priority for residents. But if we can demonstrate to residents that this is how we make sure that all of this open space is available to public access, a good example, you remember the pushback down on, um, the south part of Barrington? Uh, they're starting to build it out now. Um, I don't know what the new road is, but it's, um, south of Route four.
The Meadowbrook.
Yeah, off Meadowbrook. So that isn't going to be open to public access, right? And the residents around there were furious. But if we're able to demonstrate to residents that this land that's going into open space is open to public access and there's an opportunity to establish and maintain trails through that property, some that are there already, but more if there's, um, opportunity for that. Um, Steve, did I misspeak at all about our ability to use a stick or the, the opportunity to use a carrot?
No, I think that seems accurate to what we talked about.
I guess I don't know. I'd, I would have to better understand what the restrictions are from a property rights standpoint to.
I'm telling you, we can't require these things. So the, we can't require this, but we can incentivize it. We can, we can carrot it. And that's where arriving, the group arriving at a ten percent, it was largely arbitrary. But we don't, we didn't want it to be a lot, but enough that, um, we would have people take advantage of that.
So, but my understanding is we don't also, we don't have to accept their desire for a conservation subdivision either. That's not an option in this case unless you're willing to do this. Go build their.
Yeah.
You're not restricting the right to use the property. I'm not creating a hardship. They still have. Right. They have a yield plan that says they can go do this.
So, and this is where having, um, having consultants with expertise is tremendously helpful. But Steve, to that logic, if they're not required to use the provisions of a conservation subdivision, does that give the town license to add requirements that infringe on the property rights? And our response would simply be, well, you don't have to do this.
I, I don't know. I think that would be a question for your legal counsel. And I, but I, what I do know is I think that that's one of the places Mark and I warned, if you go to some of those changes, you may ruin what is a good thing right now in Barrington, um, by make, by turning people off from this option.
I don't, I, I would say I wouldn't disagree, but the cost incentive to do it this way is so much greater. I can't see anybody not being, not, no developer is not going to be willing to move in that direction.
And I think, I.
And I don't agree with you. In this, in this economy right now, when you're getting two twenty a lot, I, I certainly don't see that because as you can, the consultants say, most other towns are not utilizing the conservation subdivision. They want to do conventional lots because that's what's selling. And so we're, that's where he says we're in a unique situation where developers are choosing to do it. Yes, there's a cost benefit to it, but there's other municipalities that are experiencing the complete opposite where they have a conservation subdivision and they can't force people to use it. There's no benefit because it's in the rural parts of northern New Hampshire, maybe where nobody wants to be in a development like this because they're going up north. But it, it's, it's, so it's certainly not, uh, a blanket case that no developer is going to do it. If you shut it down and Barrington lots are still selling for two twenty, someone's going to put a road in.
Let me just question this because it's something I'm struggling with. Why, why does everyone want to do it here and not in surrounding neighborhoods?
Cost is, is one, yeah, cost and they sell.
If you got it.
And they sell. It's.
I think you're saying that it's more expensive to, to do a conservation subdivision.
No, to do a conventional road. There's more road infrastructure. But if you rewind ten years ago when we were on the board together, we were inundated with people that said they want walkable neighborhoods. They want houses on top of each other. They want a downtown Dover. They want to move out of the city and take those little neighborhoods to Barrington. And we changed our regulations to meet those needs because that was what people wanted. So developers build what want because that's what people are paying a million dollars for. It's not because there's no other house out there for a million dollars. It's because those people want those homes. And yes, does it benefit the developers that, so you know, the, the, the other side of this coin to use the same tactics to increase conservation subdivisions and not give the bonus is to make your yield plan reduce ten percent and then add ten percent for open space. You know, it's a workaround.
But that isn't, so does everybody track with what Jamie just said? That isn't an option that's off the table, right? It, the, the, what the consultants say is be careful about disincentivizing conservation subdivisions. Um, but, but taking, you know, saying your yield plan's ninety percent of what your conventional subdivision would be, but to get a hundred percent, you have to do these things. That's the carrot and the stick. But we'll get a, we'll get a legal opinion about that. I want to, I, I saw Bob and Andy, um, um, you know, commenting non-verbally. So one of the things that I, I felt like was astounding is when we met as a group of the select board and the, the subcommittee of the planning board, it was almost unanimous, and I think just with small nuance, but it was, it was almost unanimous that the group felt like it was that the best, if we were going to have land residentially subdivided in Barrington, the best solution for that was conservation subdivisions. To the extent where there was discussion about requiring it or not, the group felt like that didn't make sense for a number of reasons. But if we start from the premise that we, this, this is the type of residential development that we want, then it makes sense to do that balancing act of not disincentivizing it so much so they don't do it, but balancing, I think, the comments that you both had, that it's such an incentive now because of the reduced infrastructure cost that there's room to balance the scales on some of these other requirements. And so I guess for the point, um, for Andy and Donna and Bob that weren't part of that group, do you three feel that the, it is worth, that the goal is to continue having residential subdivisions that are open space subdivisions opposed to traditional or conventional subdivisions? Do you think we want conservation instead of traditional?
I mean, my personal opinion, I want conventional. Uh, I've seen enough of these cluster housings and these subdivisions, and many people that I talk to feel the same. I've got a child looking for land. He wants no part of buying a lot in one of these subdivisions.
Sure.
So we're looking to other towns and communities for that.
Where those lots exist.
Where those lots exist.
Yet they are selling up here two and a half times faster than Village Place sold. They should all be, in two and a half years, all fifty-eight.
So that's good perspective. Andy, Donna, go ahead.
My, my general comment on that is you will see conservation subdivisions continue to sell and sell rapidly here as long as the tax rate in Barrington remains substantially lower than everybody around us. And that's where it is. So this is back to that chicken and egg piece where if you do not control the tax rate, once it comes on par with other communities, that's when you will see the slowdown in conservation subdivision sales.
But Andy Knapp's perspective, right? Like if, if somebody came in and they've got twenty acres of land and they're going to do tw, you know, ten lots in a conventional subdivision or ten lots in a conservation open space subdivision, what's your preference? Like what do you think's right for Barrington?
It would depend on the parcel. Like I'm, I'm on the line with Bob where I would much rather have more land and have space around me where I don't have some neighbor crawling through my shorts.
But you bought a quarter acre lot or less.
I bought a quarter acre lot on a lake.
But I mean, it's just.
And so that new law.
So it's not earned.
Everybody's entitled to their opinion. We don't all have to agree. But I think that the important part for these recommendations is the premise of these recommendations and the, the feeling of the select board as a collective and the, the master plan subcommittee is that it's worth, it's worth, um, having the conservation subdivisions because of the benefits of ma, maintaining open space, having that open to the public, having contiguous, contiguous open space for trails and redesigning them in a way that make them feel more in keeping with the rural character than something like behind the town hall. So, well, like I said, we don't all have to agree.
Yeah.
I agree with you. Conventional, really. I like more land. I mean, there's good, both, both ways are, I can see.
But that seems to be counter to the desire to have a rural aesthetic or rural character.
Conservation or conventional?
Conventional. It's sprawl. I mean, you got two, two hundred foot down a road as opposed to having one road going in, maybe increasing our buffer to two hundred feet and the houses are in there.
Well, if we talk about lot size, that may help clear some of that up.
Well, I think with the bigger lot size, we also have longer road. I think we're going to end up with more.
And I point out about the lot size, you can't find a, a couple of examples where someone used that minimum lot size. You know, these are one acre lots out here are bigger.
Three quarters to one and a quarter.
I mean, they're not twenty thousand square foot lots. I mean, it'd be hard pressed to find somebody that used a twenty thousand square foot.
Yeah, they already rent ninety to a hundred.
You couldn't fit these houses on a twenty thousand square foot lot.
You're changing a regulation that won't change anything.
Yeah, and we're not on that one right now. I mean.
Yeah, you know what you're controlling is density.
One or the other.
By changing the lot size, you control how many houses they cram in there. So now you, now you control your impact on your schools and your additional impact on your municipal services.
But isn't the point that, that we wanted to get a hundred and twenty acres of conservation land turned over to the town? Wasn't that the main thing? Who cares about how the houses are?
I don't think there was ever a like target, that maybe the conservation commission had a target. I can tell you.
I think that's part of the rural character people want. More trees. They keep saying more trees. The fact that this was laid out poorly because of zoning and they couldn't have a buffer on one, on one twenty-five.
I think you can have a mix of both. And I would not want to say that a conservation subdivision is the only way to go. If a developer says, hey, I think a traditional subdivision here is going to look a lot better in this area or feel a lot better. Then, then that's there. I don't, I don't want to.
Who's stopping them from doing that?
No, no, and everybody agrees on that. That's the good thing.
I don't think that's the point. We're going to force anybody to do it.
Well, but I think that was Connor's question to me was what do I prefer as a conservation subdivision or a, or a conventional? And I'm not fixed to one or the other. I think there's a balanced approach to the both of them.
And maybe that question was more narrow than it was intended. I guess the, the, but, but what I'm hearing is it's worth getting a more specific legal opinion on the carrot and the stick as it comes to some of the public benefits. Like benefits to everybody else for a conservation subdivision, like requiring it to be open to the public, requiring them to establish trails if trails aren't there already, requiring them to, to establish a parking area if there isn't one there already. And these items are at a cost to the developer, right? Which is why the proposal for a ten percent increase in yield was there because, hey, we're getting something out of this. What I'm hearing, what I heard Andy say was maybe we can require them to do that anyways, and it's still worthwhile for them because of the the less infrastructure. So for the sake of argument, if if we're able to require it with Andy's logic that if they're not required to do a conservation subdivision, they could always do a tr- conventional. And so that gives us license, it's all a carrot, and that gives us license to say, if you want to do open space, you have to meet this threshold. And and using the language that Steve and the team put together, if the development um will provide, so that would say like you're required to provide two or more of the following: improve trails or connectivity, allow public access, maintain existing or establish new trails, allow multimodal trail use, and or establish designated parking area. Is that the type of language that this group would want to see required if possible?
Well, quick comment on that. I think we often get access anyway because they wanna they wanna do a co- they they cannot provide access if they keep it private and the the homeowners the homeowners in the area maintain the uh conservation land. Usually they don't.
They're giving us virgin land though, right? No parking areas, no trails. We had to pull the the town through this group, had to pull a couples stall parking area, gravel parking area on the Bending Brook subdivision off Malago, right?
Yeah, but that's what my point, my point is if you if they keep it private, in other words, they they own it, they then we can't require public access, and that's in our ordinances. But if they turn it over to the town or they go to conservation, you know, they turn over uh southeast, you know, the southeast land trust, then it becomes open. So it becomes open most of the time anyway because they don't want to own it themselves. They want to turn it over to somebody.
Most of the time, but not all the time.
South Sound couldn't be interested unless it's really contiguous to their property. So it's really the town. Is the town willing to build the trails?
Is the town willing to accept it? We can put those conditions in it as a condition of accepting it. So I I think that say that we can't get access to the property is is only true if they keep it, they own it themselves and they maintain it.
Meadow Brook's the best recent example of that, right? I mean, that was recently approved. It's under construction right now, but that was a big bone of contention for the residents in those areas. And I think what what we talked about with the select board and the subcommittee of the mount of the uh planning board is that we owe the existing residents in Barrington a set of land use regulations that reflects what they want to see out of their community, right? And what what I think we heard, um what we heard the loudest maybe with something like the Meadow Brook subdivision is this land has been open, not posted for years. You're telling me that that this portion of the land is going to remain open, but now all of a sudden we can't use it? We can't access it? Why do we have all these open space subdivisions if we don't have access to that property? And so looking for a mechanism to make sure, it doesn't make a huge difference to the developer, right? It obviously doesn't make a huge difference to the people buying the houses because the houses sell either way. So if we can protect the town's interest, and and in that case, I mean the existing residents, by ensuring public access and requiring the developers or incentivizing either way um to develop trails or develop parking areas to to, you know, um jumpstart that process, um then I think we're doing a better service to our existing residents.
But I think we're we're already seeing that. In conservation subdivisions that have come before us, they've come with two parking spots. Well, we'd really like to see a couple more.
Well, let's look at this one, right? This one out here, there's no parking spots, there's no trails, there's there's a couple of access points. But what we talked about is we're not very far off, and it was helpful to hear from Steve and Mark and the team that we're already achieving what most communities want to achieve, right? What for the same types of communities that want to maintain their rural character, hold on to that piece of, you know, New Hampshire that feels like you're out in the woods. We're a lot closer to that than most of them, but residents don't necessarily understand that. And so when residents see this subdivision, right, they see the hundred acres, the ninety acres that's developed as fifty-five residential lots, right? They don't see the one hundred and nine acres of conservation property that they have the rights to use. Well, why don't they see it? Because it's hidden behind all the houses, because there's no trails, because there's no parking areas. And some of that's a messaging thing, right? The Trails Committee was out there again today trying to figure out how they could establish some trails. But if we had a regulation in place that required the developer, not as a negotiation with the planning board, you know, trying to jockey to get four parking spots instead of two, but if it was a requirement that they are, if there's existing trails, that they're maintaining those or relocating those, or if there's no trails, that they're establishing a trail network that maybe connects to other trails and they're establishing parking areas for public use of that property. Um I feel like that changes the tune a little bit of this two hundred and twelve acres that's out here and puts to the forefront for the existing residents that, hey, look at this conservation resource that you now have better access to than you did before when it was just vacant land.
Uh I I guess I hear differently than John in that rural character to the people I speak to is we want a house nestled in the woods on two acres of land. Not what we've got here or there. And the access we've been able to get without giving extra density and building up these pieces even more.
Yeah, and so take off the table the extra density, right? I mean, the the idea is if there's a way we can require it without providing anything else and developers are still going to use that, that's worthwhile.
Yeah, I think the 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 team would sort of like that better. There wasn't like people saying, yeah, we need to do density.
I don't think having, I don't think the carrot piece really comes into play until you hit a plateau where nobody's moving forward with development. That's when you come back and say, okay, now we're willing to potentially create an incentivized approach to this. But I think the approach as a whole, no, it's it's very incentivized already.
Because if they know the density is there in the background, they won't offer anything upfront.
Right. So let's get that leave that specific legal opinion about the carrot and the stick for that. Um before we move on to a different topic, anything that occurred to you, Steve, from that conversation that uh you think would add value?
No, I think you're all trying to sort out how to make it continue to work and be attractive and yet not give away more than you have to, and I think that makes sense.
Perfect.
But I would do want to say, you know, to Bob's point, he he knows it better than anybody because he's he's in the business. But if I was buying a a house in Barrington, would I want to be in a conservation subdivision or a two acre lot? I'd be in a two acre lot every time. So if you're talking about what's attractive to buyers, I don't think it's a subdivision.
Coming from another quarter acre lot person, you know.
Why why not have a diversity of types?
I want it for other, I want it for other people. I want other people to have what I would have wanted if I didn't choose this. But ten could be, you could be talking hypothetically.
That we're vilifying all these people that live in these types of developments and we do so quite publicly. And yet people that are quite happy and they like having this. So rather than not saying, rather than saying, we don't want this, let's offer all different types of houses. Allow them to be so that you can't see them. And then what does it matter to you how it's how it's put in?
Well, to me, it's a matter of driving down the street. We used to have a rural town. You drive down the street now and you're looking at townhouses and fifty-four houses.
Go down Beauty Hill Road or any of these old roads and you tell me where these houses are all set back so far. They're all there. The difference here is that I think that they're new houses. And so i- i- it's, again, I'm going to come back to this. Why does it matter what it looks like if it's behind trees? Whether it's a single acre lot or a subdivision. If you can't see it from the street, why does it matter to you?
And part of the the consultant was suggesting a two hundred foot buffer in any town road in a single entrance to the cluster of the to the group of homes that are in there.
But I think Scott's question is good for the boards that are against the conservation subdivision. Would it matter to you if they were buffered vegetatively on any size lot?
No, that would definitely help if you if you if you're not driving down Route Nine looking at them.
Residents who live near on two acre lots don't like looking at conservation subdivisions and new people moving in who are used to living in a neighborhood like them.
Well, and that's my point to John saying that they're selling like hotcakes. Well, yeah, because we're getting an influx from places like Dover where they used to live in, where they're looking in the neighbor's window as they're getting ready.
Bob, I love that point, and these are the conversations that are happening in the community, right? I say constantly that the the death of local government is an echo chamber, right? We can't all agree. We need to have these spirited discussions because these are the discussions that the community's having. And so when we end up with a product that we take to them and say that we're being responsive, it needs to be put through this process. But I think this is a a a perspective that I have had and have had conversations with folks about is that at what point does a certain housing type, does a certain residential development, without pointing any fingers, at what point does that attract buyers that expect a different level of service than Barrington traditionally provides? And we had we had lengthy conversations about that with the select board and with the subcommittee of the master plan uh or with the like master plan implementation efforts. And the challenge is, and and um Steve and Mark were great about this, you know, they said, listen, if you if you think that you can impact the decision matrix of the matrix of a home buyer, more power to you. People have tried and failed that for for decades. But if if we can bridge the gap between the types of residential developments that we're getting based on our current regulations and the types of residential subdivisions that we think residents want or what they want them to look like. And that's the beauty, and I want to I want to circle to this. Um and I want to get back to other comments that people have. But this four step design process and some of the associated changes, like the road grade changes is a perfect example of that. Making clear in our regulations, this doesn't even need to be a zoning change, but making clear in our regulations that we're willing to go from seven percent to nine percent if you can demonstrate that the purpose is to not clear cut trees. What Mark and Steve said is the reason you end up with developments like this is because you have a seven percent great road grade requirement and the the um the yeah, the cut and fill for that, but then also the like road profiles and how much turn you can have. Um all the stuff's over my head. But a developer has to go in there and nuke the place so they can get the cut and fill and they can get the lots and and all the grading of the lots and the road. And if you if you tell them, hey, it matters more to us that your development is designed within the natural features of the lot you're developing it within, then come to us and say, hey, give us nine percent so we can leave all these trees and and nestle this uh into the natural features that exist, so it's not just clear cutting the lots. And that four step design process, as they've designed, as they've described um in in this deliverable, is intended to require those conversations at the beginning of the design phase. So you're not being brought a full um application where it the ship has already left port, right? But you're able to to say, you're able to articulate, as is going to be, as is proposed to be described in the regulations, what's important to the town and why it's important for us to accomplish it, nestling them within trees. The Toll End Road subdivision, right? Even that one, the houses are set so far back, it doesn't feel anything like this one. Village Place, even through Village Place, because of how not all of them, down near Route Nine, they're kind of clear cutting close together, presumably because of the cut and fill of, you know, coming around that turn and going up the hill. But if if we're able to, through this four step design process, address those, the look and feel of a subdivision better, I feel like we will have, they will be so much better received. If we can't stop the development, um it'll be so much better received in the community. Does that um does the, if the process works that way, does that resonate with what you think we're trying to accomplish? It's hard to say, right? Yeah, we don't know.
I I I guess as of right now, all I'm seeing is there's no balance, li- like Scott mentioned. Getting balance to me would be important, getting back to traditional subdivisions and conservation subdivisions and making the conservation subdivisions more fitting for Barrington.
Like Maryhill.
Big buffer.
It's like we all agree in not wanting to see them, so the big buffer.
Right.
I mean.
You gotta have the two hundred foot buffer that I suggested. I was gonna go one fifty, but these guys said two hundred on the road. And they have to have an active and continuing uh ability to keep that buffer.
And then if you do four houses with a green space, and then four houses, you know, you break them up and that could be a access to the open space behind, you know, and I bring up, not to get off subject here, but it's like this board changed the back lot subdivision thing where that literally takes houses off the main road and puts them into the woods and and explicitly got rid of the back lot thing because for some reason. You know, so I mean, it's like contradictory to, you want one thing and then other regulations that would have provided some of that stuff, get rid of. You know, so.
We just want everything hidden from the streets.
Right.
Right?
I don't need it hidden from the street like Beauty Hill. I don't mind looking at the house. But I like seeing trees between the houses and woods behind the houses, not looking at a house with a house behind the house with a house next to the house.
This is hidden, do you care?
I I to say I care, do I care? Yes.
You didn't know it was there.
But if I didn't know, but if I didn't know it was there.
I'm just asking.
Village Place is an example. I mean, you look at Vision Village Place going by, you see a couple houses, but you don't see a lot. I mean, and Breezy Way, I think, is a good example of a con- you know, conservation subdivision like Connor had mentioned that was laid out nicely. I think that was topography and ravines that he couldn't build on, you know, so it worked out good, you know, but.
But I think what I'm hearing um through the through uh the conversation is that the goal of properly screening any development is is ubiquitous, right? Everybody has that goal. If it's a traditional subdivision, then that happens naturally because things are more spread out. But when it's an open space subdivision, we have to bolster our requirements to make sure that that happens, and it's not happening now. And the the beauty of the first meeting that we had with Steve and Mark is they pulled up our subdivision regulations, right? Open up our subdivision regulations and look at the figures, right? There's four figures. One says this is desirable and three say we don't want it to look like this. Look at any of our conservation subdivisions of ten lots or more in the past six years, and they all look like what we say we don't want them to look like. And Steve and Mark's feedback was enforce what it already says, right? Like if you don't want to look like this, don't let them look like this. And Young Road's a good example of that, right? Young Road looks like the on the the subdivision regulations don't look like this. And it's it's a challenge because there are so many other um factors that the planning board is working on. But resetting the tone in the conservation uh conversation about it, having some updated figures, including the clusters of no more than four with open space in between, the two hundred foot setbacks, not having all of these cul-de-sac roads and and so that, this is a, this is the goal of this, is to accomplish the what isn't being accomplished now with the conservation subdivision zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. Um and so it sounds like the goals are all shared. I the question is, do these tools recommended by Steve and Mark and the team, do these tools do enough to adjust conservation subdivision regulations to accomplish those goals? And is it worth trying?
I I think what they're doing is good and maybe it's just having a way to pull it back to it. Because when I think of, like, y- you know, they're making the reference in go back to what you want or go back to what you have. And if you look at when conservation subdivisions really started, I think Deer Ridge was probably one of the more pioneering conservation subdivisions.
But that was, that's a conventional. Our zoning used to have an open space re- regulation in there.
Right, and they had the open space. But when you look at it, like those lots are laid out, I think, more like what we talk about, we would like it to look like.
I we I drove Steve and Mark up through that, right? We came up Deer Ridge and I said, look, this is this development, right? Regardless of two acres or, you know, three quarters of an acre, whatever the the circumstances are, but the the means and methods, the contractor means and methods of accomplishing this subdivision are better than some of the other ones. Toll End Road is another example. That's an open space subdivision, but the houses are all set back, they're staggered. Yeah, I I wouldn't want to live in one of those because I don't want to want to open my shade and, you know, see my neighbor's shade right there. But that it's it the the look and feel is different than um some of the other subdivisions. So getting back to the specifics, the only thing that I've heard that we we want to change or adjust a little bit is going from four to six to just four, um as far as the the clustering groups. And then the point about open space um for public access, trails and parking areas, um looking to make that a uh an initial requirement, if legally possible.
No density.
No density bonus.
Option to go to six if they do things for us. That's the incentive we're looking for. Open it to um the general public, for example.
So no actual number of increase, just the layout.
Yeah, and some of the things mentioned, go, you could go, they said you can go from four to six with a conditional use permit. And maybe that we would gain some incentive um if we allowed that.
And did everybody track the the, there's a couple of sections in here talking about going to conditional use. And obviously, the if it's in your subdivision regulations, the planning board can waive those at any time. But the goal was to give some specific language and say, hey, we're probably not going to waive these except under these circumstances. Like giving, um I forget how Steve and Mark described it, but being more explanatory to developers so and engineers, so when they're coming in and looking at it, they have the guidance. They know what we're trying to accomplish. And so they know what to ask for, how to ask for it. And so whether it's a conditional use permit, a kind of a a threshold higher, or just waiving regulations like the seven percent to nine percent um and the, what what's it called? The turn, not the turning radius, but. and the, what's it called? The turn, not the turning radius, but the, the road profile.
Yeah, from 50 to 70. How do we leverage, because I would almost feel like I would gain more value out of what they would provide than we do having our engineer, CMA reviewing this. Because CMA is reviewing it for, does it meet the requirement, not does it meet the spirit and intent? And the spirit and intent is really what we're after here. They gotta meet the requirement no matter what.
Yep. And to that end, the, there is a second phase of, of our work with the consultants. We applied for a $100,000 grant to fund a portion of a, of a future phase to focus on different areas of our zoning ordinance regulation. Some of that is the town center. You know, we've, we've heard from developers that our regulations aren't really creative enough to accomplish what people say that they want. We've, we probably have to also do some soul searching and really understand what we want and how we, if that's, you know, kind of feasible still. But anyway, so it's an excellent point, Andy. And if, if the planning board is happy with the work product, then that's absolutely something we can continue to explore.
I feel like it's at least a point to have a conversation that is above and beyond, like, does it meet 6.2.4.1, parents, three? Like, it's actually something that's, can, can really be like, hey, it, it's more than that. This doesn't align with what your, your vision of this system is. And then we're having that conversation as opposed to just the, the strict rule of law conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I'm seeing a lot of head nods. It seems like that's, people are interested in that. Back to these specific proposals.
I have one question. So under 6.2.6 (2).
Here we go.
It's about the buffer. It says restored enhanced buffer through replanting trees and understored vegetation is one option. I think that's too lenient.
Okay.
So what about minimum diameter of vegetation?
I really don't want to see anything. I think that's the spirit of this, isn't it?
Oh, interesting.
An untouched buffer.
An untouched, a natural buffer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you think about that, Steve?
What number?
In terms of feasibility or other options? Step on the screen if it's, if it's easier to make it bigger.
So it seems like it's that third bullet, just dropping that third bullet.
Yeah.
I mean, the one concern would be as if it's already an open landscape, you just, yeah.
If you have a field.
Or if they need to go through it for access and they have to restore it, they'll always be coming back to you or the ZBA to, you know, oh, we found this spot, we gotta clear it to get in there.
Or they just clear it before they have any development plans.
Right.
As, as a way to subvert it.
I mean, there's nothing stopping someone from clearing it. I mean, I'll use a great, the best example in recent history. Drive down Scruton Pond Road, a beautiful two-plus acre lot, the guy wiped it flat and planted some arbrevidis. It's unbelievable.
He's got a 100-foot buffer for prime wetlands there too, right?
Yeah, buffered, yeah.
So.
So he'll restore it.
I'm gonna say, two acres, I mean, you can still clear two acres on a conventional lot.
Yeah. So, but let's, let's figure out if we, if we can't strike it because of those other options, then let's, let's make it beefier, right? Is there a?
Go ahead, Steve. Yeah, I'm wondering, Connor, if we put it below the other three and point out that it's, it's the least favorable option. In instances where it's necessary, this would be an additional option.
And do we want to have some, some size?
And recommend species, you know, that are in the planting schedule that'll survive.
Call Steve Diamond. Yeah, that sounds like a good.
He was always good on that.
Yeah. Like a, like a four-inch minimum diameter.
Caliber of four inches or something.
Yeah.
Do you see language like that often, Steve? Like, is there, is there language that you could pull from?
Yes.
But mature.
Yeah, four-inch caliber is a good size.
You got a belt or something that's off, just so you know.
I love having Andy around. Free facility maintenance.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's good. Scott had that one. Other items on the list, we didn't go through them exhaustively. I know everybody has read it. I trust that it makes sense. I think the biggest systematic change is the four-step design process. And I think that we talked about how that gives us an opportunity to maybe review other things that are priorities for this group, right? Maybe that four-step design process integrates in more intimately the work of the conservation commission in reviewing these, right? So you're getting feedback at an early stage in the process, and that comes into the design conversation. I don't want to say before it's too late, but before making changes is like pulling teeth, you know?
Well, and how do we handle, and I'll, I'll use for example, because it's closed, the, and it's, it's just from the, the reference standpoint, like you think about the, the campground. They, they were leaving all this planting, everything was gonna be there. And then they said, oh, we couldn't get the infrastructure and we were gonna kill all the trees, so they clear cut it all anyway and went and wiped it out. So how do you, how do you address that aspect of it going into it?
Is that what you're really talking about?
Well, it's, 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 it's non-compliance with the, the plan that was submitted.
And you remember when Laura was here, right? That, because that topic came up, I forget what the specific conversation was. But that topic came up and it, it's plain and simple. You, you enforce stronger, right? And that's an arm of the select board. Now, we have good professional staff to do that. But mutually identifying those expectations, I think that was a conversation relative to field changes. And, and what the.
That's where we need a definition.
Yeah, what the barometer.
You can't change a foundation on a 192-foot building. I call it a field change.
Exactly. That feedback loop is really important, right? Like, I, I wouldn't want to do, I wouldn't want to do Jamie's job anyways. But it makes it a lot more difficult for Jamie to do his job when you don't know what the, and that's why we bring things like that, like that back to this board, right? Because the foundation for that property changed as a field change, right? That shouldn't have been a field change, right? Like, that probably was beyond the barometer of this planning board, like, hey, we want you to do that. Yeah.
Exploded.
The, now the parking area, that was less impactful. And so it was, it was challenging for the developer, for this town to tell the developer, no, listen, you've got to go back to the planning board. They need to consider this. We're not doing a field change for that. And, you know, he's thinking in his mind, well, you know, I changed the whole footprint of this foundation, but I can't change the parking area? But that barometer is important for people like Jamie to understand. And the expectations of this group on enforcing site plans for things like the campground and doing those field changes, that's really important feedback for the select board to consider, so the select board knows what the expectation of the planning board and the community is in enforcing these things.
As long as the zoning administrator knows he can bring these things back here, we will entertain a change to the site plan or the subdivision. We will happily look at it and.
Yeah, but enforcement. Enforcement is, is your piece to that. I know it's a little off topic of this, but I think it's important to mention. Other items for what's proposed here?
Well, the only thing I wanted to add to the 200 feet, which I like, is what about, they don't mention keeping the 100-foot buffer on the rear and the sides.
Well, I think he's implying it should be 200 feet all the way around.
No, I don't think so. It's on the road. He mentions on the road.
Read that? Okay.
Was that an intent?
No, what we talked about was because you're asking for 200 front, 200 in the front, 100 feet around the back adjacent to other open spaces and other residential neighborhoods seemed like not a good place to use up your open space. So having a regular buffer back there, if you want to have an additional buffer, you could add it. It depends if you're the neighbor.
Well, we could make it again in discretion of the boards. For example, Young Road, there's only really one neighbor.
Yeah. But I mean, imagine being that one guy and you set your house way back to avoid being by anybody. And all of a sudden, now you're gonna have 15 houses crammed right down your, your side.
But we could leave the language that in certain situations, we could double it from 50, let's make it 50, and then we could double it to 100.
I think if my recommendation, I went higher than that, but.
And this is where the trade-off.
I know.
So we talked about, it, well, and yeah, and I want to emphasize that we haven't talked about that. I mean, I really think that this is, this is an either or, right? I think they would both work, but I think if we're going to, to ask residents to pursue these zoning changes and if the planning board's open into making these regulation changes, I think that's in lieu of other changes to the conservation subdivision. Because both would be, would be unorganized. Both either or may work. But I think it's the preference of the board how to approach it. Relative to the buffer, the trade-off we talked about in the, in the group and in conversations with the consultant is if we're saying that we're okay with two, three and four homes kind of clustered in a line, in, in a row, and having, in a way to have the open space stretched to the road in between and kind of have them nestled better, then adding the setback requirements between those lots, in addition to that, makes it more difficult. Makes more, you know, spreads that out more. I'm not saying either is good or bad, but that was a conversation we had relative to the other setbacks, other than the, the 200 feet. And, and maybe I'm confused. Are we talking about for each individual lot or for the subdivision as a whole?
Subdivision as a whole.
Okay. I was talking about individual lots, sorry.
That kind of begs the question too, by having these small clusters that increase the amount of road they have to build instead of their preferred system of just cramming everything on the road. So we'd have to be aware of that too. Because they are suggesting that we do not, I think the way I read that they do not, 6.2.5 (5), the preference for all groups, not just cluster groups, shall be obtained, obtained from interior streets. And it should be done in, as suggested by our regulations in small groups of not more than four. And I think they said maybe six, but.
So do we want to reintroduce the 100 feet? I think what Steve said is that just cuts into your open space a little bit, but.
But we do 50 feet, and then in situations, the board has a right to increase it if there's a nearby neighbor on one side, for example.
I would be careful because if you write, whatever you put is the minimum, they're gonna say I'm meeting the minimum.
Maybe you start at 100. And, and this is why, and I really like how Steve and Mark wordsmithed this. Those areas where we maintain our regulation at seven percent grade. But we include details so the developer or the engineer can read it and know that in these specific circumstances, they'll bring it to seven. That's a different look, different look and feel than if the planning board says, okay, the regulation is nine, but we may require seven. Then the planning board's coming in, you're the bad guy. But if you detail specific circumstances where it could be less, so maybe it's 100.
Well, perfect example is Young Road. Why would you need a 100-foot buffer next to the Goodwill Conservation Land? Because this is going to be added effectively.
So say it's 100, and then say for good cause, like no abutting development or abutting open space, could be reduced down to 50. Do you think you could incorporate language like that, Steve?
Yeah, that was easy to follow. Thank you.
Does, is that what the board is interested? I'm seeing head nods.
Reasonable.
Okay. I'm glad you brought that up, John.
Two things that were deleted that I'm kind of questioning. Page three. You know, all applications planning board are covered by site inventory, and that was taken out. I think Joyce, you generally kind of like this.
Which one? Go ahead, Joyce.
It's up on the screen. This red. Strike through.
No, 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 this is right, this one right here, Joyce.
6.3.2 (1).
Yeah, that one. That page three. So that language was taken out site inventory.
It was taken out because it was replaced on the following page with the four-step design process that Connor talked about, which is more extensive.
Just before you move from that, because I think the four-step design process will take education beyond just this meeting, without question. But can you just explain in a four-step design process, Steve, how the site inventory would be replaced? Like, what would that be?
Yeah, so basically, what you're, what you're telling the applicant from the beginning is you want them to come in and first identify the highest value conservation areas. And so those are identified under 6.3.2 (3).1. So the primary and secondary conservation areas within Barrington. And then secondarily, look at the places that remain as a place to start for where your residential uses would go. And then lastly, kind of connect with local streets and interior streets and trails. And so it's, this is a process that's been suggested in planning since the 80s. A few communities have done it really well. A lot of communities haven't used it. But where it's been done well, it's, it's clearly communicated to the applicant upfront what your objective is. And then it lets them go through this process specific to their own parcel and show you what they can do conceptually.
Does that make sense, Joyce and Ron?
Yes.
Okay, Ron, I know you had something else.
Yeah, I know that the yield plan is in, page three, the yield plan is there. There's also some yield plan language on page five that we can read it. And I just wanted to discuss that briefly. Generally, what, Steve, what we've been seeing is we're trying to strengthen the yield plan requirements because we've been seeing some pretty weak submissions.
Yep.
And we've been trying to strengthen those so that we can make sure the yield plans are in fact reasonable and practical. Because we've seen some that are definitely not. Anytime I see the language taken out, it makes me a little bit nervous.
Is there anything from page five that you think should be carried forward to page three that's, that we struck?
So I'm reading for comparison purposes, planning board may also require the applicant to submit a second conceptual development plan that illustrates a conventional subdivision layout based on town zoning and subdivision standards for nonclustered development on the proposed site. The purpose of the second plan would be to ensure that the number of dwelling units proposed for the conservation subdivision does not exceed the maximum number of dwelling units allowed as specified subsection 6.4 of this ordinance?
So I always struggle with the yield plan, just because they're like, look, it all fits, but it's kind of garbage.
And that may be an enforcement piece. Steve, we talked about this at the, at the committee meeting. Can you, can you give your professional perspective or opinion on how we should be approaching the requirements for a yield plan to make sure it passes the smell test?
Yeah, what I'd like to do, actually, this is one of the strengths that Mark has as a planner for a lot of other communities with conservation subdivision activity. So let me see if he has some recommended language where we could beef up the yield plan to make it more clear and more realistic, because it seems like what you're getting, you've been unsatisfied with. So I can work with him on that this week. Okay. So one other item, and Scott pointed out to me that I noted it on my items, which you wouldn't have this, Steve. From minimum track size, you just cut it, you eliminated the various zones and just went to 20 acres. One of the proposals that I had made was to increase the lot size to, or I'm sorry, to increase the minimum track size to 30 acres for general residential and neighborhood residential tracks. While I think the smaller lot size definitely makes sense for village district and those areas, the larger lot size makes more sense to me if you're moving out into your general residential and neighborhood residential areas.
And it's not surprising that, that you have that opinion based on the conversation about not either or conservation or traditional, but what the preference is. And I suspect Don and Bob probably fall in line with you on that. So we, when we talked about it in the working group, there was actually a period of time where we were talking about, do we reduce it to 10 everywhere, right? Like, like, let's, let's have this be, if, if there is a preference to get the benefits of less infrastructure, more undeveloped space, more contiguous undeveloped space, if that's the higher priority, then going down to 10 may be beneficial. And Mark and Steve had really good feedback and they're like, yeah, probably that's too small, for a lot of the same reasons that, that you would kind of think. So the compromise was, well, maybe it's just 20 everywhere. But I don't think, and I'm speaking for myself, but from reading the room, I don't think that there was a strong preference that that go from 30 to 20. I don't think we have foregone good conservation subdivisions because that requirement's in place. Does anybody else have an opinion on that?
I kind of agree that it was too small, 10 acres.
Yeah, we got away from the 10 acres. But the changing to 20 everywhere, I don't think anybody would have a lot of heartburn, either leaving it as it is, or you were saying.
I was just saying 30.
30 in the residential.
Yes, I'm not changing to 20 everywhere. Right.
So just 20 in village, and then general residential, neighborhood residential, it's 30.
Correct. Neighborhood's already 30.
Right. Yep. Steve, do you have an opinion on that?
No, it really comes down to how much you want to encourage these and how much you think it'll be a factor. You know the landscape better. And what will help you get this passed.
Also, if you're gonna increase the buffer to 200 feet in the front, I think that's a big sacrifice.
Because proportionally, that's a lot bigger on 20 acres. That's a good point. So where are we landing? Current regulations or change, Andy's proposing to flip? general residential from 20 to 30.
I think that was the word it was, was it?
No.
It's 20 now, only neighborhood residential is 30.
Okay.
I like changing both residentials to 30.
Yep. I'm seeing head nods.
Yep, oh yeah.
Nobody's snapping their feet now? All right.
So neighborhood and general residential will be 30 and village will be 20?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Glad you brought that up.
We can make that change.
An uninformed question. We took out the word cluster. I'm trying to figure out, does anyone not use a conservation subdivision and use a cluster design? And if so, should the cluster design be the same for those?
It's actually funny, in my recommendations, I recommended eliminating cluster groups from the language. Because I thought it essentially aligned with the PUD per section 16.2. Permitted in TC and VD zones and not really intended for the general residential or neighborhood residential. So it aligns better with where it's used as a, as kind of a PUD where when I look at cluster developing, that tends to be almost how it aligns is more, more similarly to a PUD than a.
Steve and Mark had similar feedback. You can elaborate, Steve.
Yeah, clusters kind of had a negative connotation over the years and I think it's from ordinances that weren't as sophisticated as yours or as easy to follow. And some of the, some of the things that you don't like about some existing neighborhoods can be a lot worse than what you've experienced. And so by moving to a conservation subdivision, as you have for a while, you've already kind of gone past the basic idea of clustering. You're a much more sophisticated ordinance and you have more, you have better design standards and a better approach. So we just wanted to scrub the remaining cluster pieces out of it. So it's not.
Does that make sense, Steve?
And if you look at it, when everyone that's come before us, they all try to make sure that they have defined lots, because when you start getting into the kind of hairy carry of the cluster side of it, nobody wants that. I only own 20 feet around my building.
Does that make sense, Scott? None of us play well in each other's sandbox, so it's better off to define it.
Yeah, we're going to put this one instead. Can I put patio?
Yeah.
The other question, I just want to clarify, I wish we could do it offline, but here we are. I'm trying to understand when we do this, if you look at Oak Hill, which we can talk about here.
No.
No.
We cannot talk about specific projects.
There's a number of projects though, and I've seen this even coming up and it's just conceptually. Because I'm on the budget committee, we're talking about these big bonds to take care of culverts and all this. It seems like as we're going through these and oftentimes, I'm thinking that we're, the culvert and fire cistern and all these things are required more often, my sense is, as a result of the cluster or a group. In my one, I'm trying to figure out if the town is always absorbing the cost for future maintenance of that. I wonder if we're actually setting ourselves up in the future for residents getting huge, with huge bills because 30 years from now, whatever, all of a sudden it's going to come due because we've had all this rapid growth. I'm trying to figure out how we manage that and is my impression, if I'm correct.
Their response was that we'll be paying, you know, 15, $18,000 a year in property taxes times 30 homes. So the town is going to make a lot of money, so they come in every 15 or 20 years to.
It's schools and everything, yeah.
I know.
I think, I think one premise of what you said, I don't think is, is consistent with what I've seen. And that is that the conservation subdivision model results in more infrastructure and more cisterns. The infrastructure, and to be clear, the culverts that we're bonding are not culverts on, on the same scale as a, as a culvert that goes in a subdivision. So those costs, we replace most regular road culverts. I think maybe like the one at the bottom of a meeting house might be one that we're, you know, if we buy a precast to replace that. But most of them are small scale. But the more road infrastructure you have, the more associated infrastructure you have and you have more road infrastructure with traditional subdivisions. And with cisterns, that, the regulations for cisterns, we have regulations for cisterns, 1,000 feet, right? 1,000 drivable feet.
Yeah, drivable.
Yeah, so. Now it's to the, yeah, to the fire chief. But 1,000 drivable feet is what's been implemented over the years. And so the more drivable feet of road you have, which you would have in a conventional subdivision opposed to conservation subdivision, the more cisterns you have. So I think that premise is, is not accurate. I mean, I think the rest of your point still stands that the more residential development that we have, built the town standards that the town takes over, the more culverts we're going to have to replace and cisterns we're going to have to maintain and all the rest. I mean.
So why not let it be just a driveway then?
So why do we push so hard on the idea of a cistern as opposed to a fire pond? Just having a detention pond or using.
Most developers don't want to dedicate the space for 30,000 gallon pond.
But it's actually.
But there'll be an opportunity to talk about that. Yeah, so.
It is a far more maintainable item.
Let's parking lot that because the, the, in a future regulation update, this group will be seeing regulations for fire protection. And so bring, you know, staff knows. Staff knows that that's coming. Okay, putting, coming closer to putting a pin in this. Are there other specific questions of the proposals from the draft deliverable? We've made some changes, they're going to get to work on that.
I like the 9% grade change in the grade. I like that.
I think.
Save the trees.
Ron or John had brought up.
Nine if they do this.
Right. Yeah, well, more incentives, right?
Minimum lot size.
If they maintain the trees along the road.
Leave it at seven, but you can get to nine.
Right, yeah.
I guess my only thing is that we should do something, I feel like, maybe you don't agree, to celebrate these changes. Because I feel like we're making meaningful changes as a result of what the, the community has asked for. And it's almost like an opportunity, you know, bring people in, have some sort of celebration, encourage people to come here and recognize that their input is being heard and that we are making, I think these are pretty monumental changes to our town that are going to affect it forever. When you look at Signature Drive, you look at all these places people are objecting over. I mean, we're going to stop that from happening again and that's worth a celebration to make.
Some of this has to go to residents first, right? Yeah. But the regulation changes, which probably shouldn't happen until the associated zoning goes into place. But, but no, I think you're spot on. Residents need to understand, we, when we sit at the polls, the select board and, you know, interact with residents, the number one thing people want to talk about is development in town, right? We have multiple informational boards that we have there with us talking about property rights and what we're doing. But we had a board this time talking about the master plan implementation work and highlighting those points that we heard that we're trying to accomplish. And that feedback loop, like I said before, is, is super important.
Changing the zoning for, what's it called, crossings, whatever it is. It's also important to remember that the changes you make today are only as good until the next planning board changes them. You know.
Have you seen things change back and forth, Jamie? Weird.
Yeah, I mean, the history of the 7% grade, does everybody remember that?
Bikes.
Steve Diamond wanted pedal bikes. Oh, right.
That we didn't know, you all, I wasn't here, didn't, it's hard to take that two dimensional drawing and picture it, right? We now have some experience that we know what we don't like and I don't know, we could have done it any better until we've gotten to this place.
Steve's got something.
Just a question on timing. So we pushed hard to get this ready and out to you all. And I know that your clock is going to start before you know it on public hearings. When would you need the next version of this so that you can keep moving?
Next week.
Exactly. So to that point, the next week or so, I would say, but.
Let's be specific. Yeah.
If.
We have a hearing on the third.
Not yet, because I need to have the attorney write the, the questions before that a public hearing can occur. So we're not going to meet our target date of December 3rd for that.
It sounds like Monday.
No, 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 later.
No.
Okay, we're having, our first public hearing is no earlier than the 3rd of December.
And we're not going to make that.
We're not making that.
While you eat your Thanksgiving dinner.
Yeah.
So we're, so that leads into the public hearing for the 3rd.
It'll be the 17th.
The 17th. And talking to the town attorney, she said sooner rather than later to get the tour, but she might be have enough here to go off of, to formulate the question.
So I'm hearing at least a week, but probably closer to two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, two weeks. So two weeks from today.
Yeah, knowing that we're, we have a meeting with you Connor next week, we'll try to have most of this tied up so we can check in with you and then we can check it out. Yeah, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, is, is that within the capability of you and Mark?
Oh, yeah. I'll just, I'll tell them that you asked for next week.
Yeah, no, no, don't even be the bad guy, no way.
I can be the bad guy.
There you go.
I think we need to work on the drawings. I don't think these, for me, illustrate exactly what we want.
So what Steve and Mark had recommended is that we actually commission specific drawings. They pulled some that were closer to what we're talking about from the zoning atlas.
And we just wanted to show you there are others out there, but I, I appreciate the comment. And we have a woman here in our office who does graphic design. And I think we can make some simple and functional ones to put in the subdivision regs if you move forward with the zoning changes, so.
Is the, by a vote of this group for the zoning changes proposed, are you interested, you know, with the changes that you'll see, but you'll see them for the next time at a public hearing? Are you interested in moving those forward to a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, you should vote on it.
Yeah.
Let's vote on it. I'll wait for Ron to get back.
Andy, you were going to talk about the minimum, the 20,000 minimum, right?
Yeah, we had talked about amending the table and I think they, I was looking to see if they captured it in here.
No, we didn't. We talked about it extensively. Basically, what Steve and Mark said is because we don't have water and sewer in Barrington, nobody's going to build on 20,000 feet. And you don't really have a lot of benefit in setting another arbitrary threshold because when you, once you start increasing that much more, then you're just cutting into the open space and you're, the trade off of the additional infrastructure and the open space is different. So we.
You're cutting into the open space because they have a requirement to leave, 60% is open space anyway? Or 50, 55? What's the requirement around how much has to be open space?
So if it gets too big, then they, then it's better, it's more, the incentive is more for them to do traditional or conventional.
60%.
I think as Connor was saying, if you add the additional design criteria that we talked about tonight and increase the minimum lot size, it starts to be less workable. So I would start with one set of changes and then, you know, get a chance to have an applicant come through and see if there's any flexibility, but it seemed like it was a lot.
Well, with the 30,000, you're talking about 30,000?
30,000 square feet.
I mean, that was based on septic as well. So there's two motivations there. One is.
But you don't need to base it on septic because the state already does.
Well, kind of.
The state recommends no more than.
They just validate that it, it fits.
Yeah, their regulations are for 0 to 8% slope and it's sandy soil, the minimum is 30,000 square feet.
Yeah, so why do you need to have 30,000 square feet?
But I mean, if they show up here and it's only, not here, but if it's only 20, they're still going to give them the permit. They're not going to say you can't put a septic in.
Right, because now you've created a hardship with a lot of record.
Yeah.
And.
You know, I think that.
Steve's trying to give you a permit, but septic doesn't work.
Yeah.
Well, you can go to a advanced.
But if we. Well, why are we having 20 if you can't do 20?
I don't.
Here, let's just go back, let's just go back to what the goal is. So what we talked about with the select board and the subcommittee of the planning board is that the goal was to have these residential subdivisions better screened, period. And one way to do that would be to increase the minimum lot size, 20 to 30,000 and increase some other setbacks. What, what we opted for and what this proposal is with the four step design process and the no cut buffers and the clustering of no more than four, that objective was to accomplish that in more specific ways than just arbitrary minimums, increasing minimums. And so we, we did talk about doing them in conjunction, but what we heard from the consultants is that isn't, that you're, you're taking away the ability to accomplish the other things you're trying to accomplish with the screening and the open space by doing it at the same time. Whereas we don't have water and sewer, that's the limitation. How many 20,000 square foot lots have we seen in conservation subdivisions?
It's true.
Zero.
No, we've seen quite a few.
How big was, I'm trying to think, what are the lot sizes on the Young Road one?
It's pretty close to 20.
I, I was going to, yeah.
Oh, there were a lot of them in their twenties, yeah.
But what's your problem, what, what do you want to change about the Young Road subdivision? That, people will have a problem with that.
Let me, let me say this, I think that saying that it's less of incentive is probably true. But there's plenty of incentive now and it doesn't, I don't think it puts a finger on the scale too high that we won't get them because we see them all the time now.
Collectively, does the group want to increase 20 to 30?
I would prefer to because when you look at it, like their well radiuses, when you do these conservation subdivisions, they're getting their septic radiuses and their well radius are kind of overlapping each other in it.
Well, in this particular one, Young Road, they actually cross the street. They cross the street.
It's not, they can't.
But they won't get it approved.
They do get approved.
Yeah.
I'm not saying the septic and the well overlap, I'm saying the wells for each lot overlap.
Protection area for the, for the, the wells actually cross the street, almost hitting the neighbor across. Right, right.
Right.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm saying is.
And I get 4,000, 4,000 square feet.
Is a big incentive. Enough of the incentive.
I guess my question is, what's, if the state scientists think it's okay, why do we think it's not? Oh, yeah.
But the state scientists are saying ideally you're going to have 30,000 square feet.
I've never, I don't know where that came from. I was trying to look it up, but. Yeah, it's. I have the table.
But to me, I think.
What's the goal?
I think the, if you look into, to not, I think there's enough of incentive for conservation subdivisions now that going to 30 won't, won't.
But what's the goal?
Change it. The feedback that we've been getting from everybody is they don't like conservation subdivisions, they're too close. And so that's, we're responding to the feedback that we get that, you know, these lot sizes are too small.
Yeah, and so I think the way that you can respond to that is that the, the, the package of changes in zoning ordinance that be, that would be proposed to residents and the regulation changes address that in specific ways with the four step design process and the specific additional requirements for the clustering, the new figures for what we want those to look like, the 200 foot buffer, the vegetative requirements, either maintaining existing or reestablishing. And so I think the, I think the challenge is doing, doing it all probably tip the scales too far. I mean, that's what the subject matter experts are telling us.
Yeah, and that's part of that, it was, I think we were less concerned about the lot size increase. We were more concerned about the frontage increase and other setback increases. Because now you're spreading it out and you're adding 100 feet between the, the groups of units. And now you're getting longer roads, which was one of the advantages of doing a conservation subdivision was the shorter road. So the lot size, I think was less of an issue because I think you're all pointing it out. It kind, it kind of sorts itself out to some degree, but it was the frontage and setbacks.
Yeah, I think what pushed this early on, and this was, has been around a long time before we even talked to the consultants, was everything we look at are these crunched together typical subdivision. And we're not going to allow those. They only have to be isolated in four to six maximum. Because if they go from four, they have to change the road. They have to have a 50 foot front right away. So you may want to, they may want to keep it at, you know, 30 foot right away with four units, so. I don't think it's necessary anymore.
And rubber hits the road.
We're not going to do the conventional.
Yeah. Changes.
Change.
Remember, you're going, you're going from 80 to 30. That's still a big incentive.
So the straw poll, I saw Andy, Bob and Ron nod along to going from 20 to 30 as a minimum. I'm, I'm seeing Dawn also, and so I mean, that's, that's a majority of the board. Scott, Joyce, do you have strong opinions? We heard from the consultant that it isn't the end of the world, probably. It's not going to be a make or break. So we'll go 30,000 minimum, Steve?
Okay, no change in frontage requirement?
Correct.
All right.
Yeah, we had, we were going to change it to 100 feet from.
Yeah.
Well, you got to change it to 100 though.
No.
Yeah, because our requirement is three to one. So 30,000, three to one, you got to do 100 front and front.
But these are new regulations.
Right. Pardon?
These are new regulations. They're your regu, your regulations.
You got to change your three to one requirement on the lot thing.
We can do that.
That's what I'm saying, you can do that.
Who can do it?
Stand your true authority, do you?
You can't, you can't change that without changing that. So if you're having, if you have three to one and you're going to have 30,000, you got to have a pretty front.
And, and the beauty of having professional staff and subject matter experts is we'll make sure those things don't fall between the cracks.
You'll figure out the language.
Yes.
The reason we also changed the side setback to 20 feet to 25 is we're hoping that that would become a green space between these crunched together subdivision. If that's no longer going to be a case, we don't need those either. If we're only going.
Which those aren't in here.
Hold on a second. You took a proportional scale of the existing things and just multiplied it, the three to one thing? I just trying to clarify that because I missed that.
It's sort of very tough math if you got a three to.
You took a proportional comparison of the existing regulation, just increased it proportionally?
Our requirement is the lot size has to be no more than three to one.
It doesn't say that anyway. That's what I'm saying.
It doesn't say that.
Where does it say three to one?
Well, listen, we will clear that up. We don't have to, we don't have to litigate this now. We we want it to be right. We want it to be right. We'll get it. We'll get the specifics before. Ron, we were getting ready to vote, but we wanted to make sure that you were here. And the vote is to push these forward to a public hearing, probably on December 17th, but yet to be determined. But no, probably no sooner than December 17th. So. Motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I was gonna say I'll second your motion.
Okay, roll call.
Shepherd, Napa.
Really impactful work, right?
I know. It's hard to get our head around because we're so used to these things. We want conservation subdivisions. We hate what they look like. If we can get to these little four parts things.
Anything else for Steve?
Reaction is from development.
Or Steve, any final comments?
No, just to thank you to everyone for being so engaged. It was really great.
I was wondering.
People that aren't engaged?
Uh, yeah.
Just as a aside Connor, when you talk to that group that's talking about the Northwest Territory here, you're going to have go.
Yes.
Get his opinion on what these things sell, these little clusters, will I sell? Or will they require, will they really want to go with the standard old subdivision?
Yeah, so so you didn't meet Mark because Mark had a separate engagement. So the members of the subcommittee who met Mark, Mark is Mark is, I will say, the more not developer friendly, but the more pragmatic, like this is what this is what the real world looks like. The you, the the planning board would like him, you know, I'm sure he likes Steve, but the planning board would like Mark as much or more because he's he's very direct. He's he's very direct and pragmatic, which I think resonates with a group like this and and not as as abstract. But the what John's talking about is we're going to meet the two of them and a a third consultant is going to meet with all of the developers and property owners in the Northwest quadrant of the town center for a follow up meeting of our last meeting. And the the we're going to talk about the specifics of the town center and and kind of what process we need to go through to understand what we're trying to accomplish, what's feasible to accomplish. But Mark, too, as part of that process, he's already talked to a lot of the developers because he's he knows all the players in the game getting some of that feedback. So I'll make sure that that comes out of that as well.
Good.
Yep, I think it's a good.
Ron, your your piece is in the subdivision 1122 parentheses four.
Yeah, and let me point out, if you've got 70, if you're 30,000, 75 feet frontage, that's a lot that's 75 by 400 feet.
Yeah.
The bowling alley. The bowling alley.
The lot length width ratio should generally not exceed three to one. Length width, not land area frontage.
Talking about width versus length. If you have a 75 foot frontage and you have 30,000 square feet, that's a 400 foot lot.
As a minimum, you're saying, like if they're if they're achieving the minimum only. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You got 75, it's got to be 400. That's not what we want.
You don't want a rectangle shaped lot. You want a perfectly square lot.
I don't want a bowling alley lot.
Well, the bowling alley might give people privacy.
My general sense, Jamie, just so you're aware, my feeling is like you should get a tube of Preparation H to walk around with because you are like the stickler to rules, like.
No, I better enforce the rules. I got to understand them. It's like, you know, you, it's not in zoning that this three to one thing and it's. As you try to create zoning that fits what you want, you you have to make it more complex. And there's hundreds of ways you can make it more complex and fit your needs, but someone's going to administer that complexity.
And that's what we got Jamie and Ralph. Met Ralph?
And but.
Is it a new AI generated piece that helps Jamie manage this?
But if you take something like you pick on 20 to 30,000 and you don't have a single conservation that has done something under than a a three, three quarters of an acre lot.
I'd be more inclined to pay for that than another body.
Why don't you bump it up to eight, you know, three quarters of an acre? Because that you 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 take five examples of conservation subdivisions that you hate and they're all over an acre or around an acre, but then you boost it up to 30,000. It's just, it's experience frustration based on a fix that doesn't fix what you described the problem as.
I'm hearing, well, they never do 20,000 square feet.
They don't.
So if they never do, then what's the problem with going to 30?
Make it an acre.
We we answered that earlier.
Solve the problem.
Vanessa.
It's got to get interesting. We're going to get to Andy's stuff.
Keep up the good work.
Hey, I would like to point out, we've already gone through half of that list because it was conservation subdivision.
That's true. Look at.
I'm, are you happy with the result though? I mean, that's that's pretty comprehensive.
Happiness is when it passes at the voting.
Yeah.
So are we striking Article 8 then? All I need to know. What you guys were just talking about, the 30,000.
No.
He's changing that to 30,000.
I don't need to do it. We don't need to do it here.
I think the only argument is anybody, I'm still on the 100. I guess that's what we haven't discussed yet.
The frontage.
Frontage on 100.
I don't know.
I thought the frontage was 200.
No, no, no.
No, for conservation.
I have the minimum standard.
Not not the buffer.
20 and 75.
The proposed changes was 30,000 square feet, lot width of 100 feet, front setback 25, side and rear were each 25.
I mean, 100. Now, the 25 is a change from 20, right?
Oh, yeah, it did.
So that table I like. I like that table.
You like this?
To want to make sure that the consultant gets that information, not a separate thing, because we want it all together.
They were.
They're going to work on something.
Just trying to clarify.
They were pushing 20 and 75. I'm saying I like what we have.
And that's and that was consensus with the board from before. So it's still.
We might get some consensus before the 17th, so we'll be talking to them.
Today, today.
Can you just send him, can you send Steve?
We're not going to talk to him again.
That table?
No, probably not. Yes. That's, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, my recommendation is send Steve that table because that's what.
I guess that's what I'm getting at is.
Yeah.
Close.
That's the quorum, right? Did we have a quorum on that?
You did previously.
Is there anyone that disagrees?
There was a name where they disagreed before, but you can disagree now. You're, I guess we're, okay.
Okay.
Um, the article, zoning article nine for the definition of the butter, the state changed the definition, so it's just updating that.
So what, like, that's interesting that they're saying now you have to be within perpendicular lines of the.
The town in Barrington has always practiced that. So we are not.
And then 50 feet, basically.
And we do 100 feet.
Touching in somewhere.
And we do 100 feet.
Okay.
So by our practice, but since it's been changed, it's recommended to be changed in our zoning to.
The discussion that the legislature was, you know, default to adding somebody else if you want. Don't worry about it. The guy's going to pay 10 bucks anyway for your.
Yeah.
And the last one was the occupancy of recreational vehicles that Jamie had talked about before.
Who's that?
I don't know if you, if anybody has questions or.
That's Article 10?
No, Article 11.
I'm here. It says Article 11.
Yep. I'm just looking away to decrease the people, number of people moving to town to live in their RVs. Just as a note of the 1132 workforce housing units, nine of them are RVs.
I I would like to point out that living in a van down by the river is not as cheap as it used to be.
No, it's definitely not. And and I keep reminding myself that I'm 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 happy that they're in a house and unhoused.
Honey wagon come along, taking their.
I had someone come in the other day and ask me if he knew of a honey wagon to empty out his bucket next to his tent. Yeah, you know, I don't, but, you know.
Well, in the army, they sold us a big capital, as they call it.
And that's what happens. You know, that's what, we had one resident that, you know, she was going from tree to tree fertilizing until, you know, the neighbor took her to court and then she put in a privy, but she put on his property and then he sued her to move it off her property. So.
She says, take that.
Yeah.
Pretty soon it'll be like, whoa, black baby.
Yeah, so you could still legally have a privy in the, you know, state of New Hampshire.
So is the board.
Okay, let's.
Consensus to move that one forward?
Yes, let's move it forward.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay.
Let's move forward and move ahead.
Okay.
Next is Andy.
Uh, wait a minute, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, Andy naps up.
Not it, but that's it for that, for this right now.
Well, it's nice. I only have three, really, three to talk about then.
Okay.
So my minimum lot size piece that has been blowing out of the water the last few years with general residential, neighborhood residential increasing to 130,000 square feet, which is a 2.9 acre lot, so roughly a three acre lot, which is more conducive to the master plan and the definition of rural character within the town to make it layout. So as Ron was just talking about, it's not bowling alley like increasing the frontage to 250 square feet, which keeps the lots in a uniform shape with minimum setbacks of 50 feet on all sides.
Zoning administrator, do you have an opinion?
Uh, my biggest concern, I I, you know, from a individual personal standpoint, I would love larger lots, you know, six acre minimum, whatever. I I'd love it because I'm with Bob and Andy on all these things. It's just not practical for long term conservation and dwelling. There will come a time in short periods that those three acre lots will be by either a new planning board or state regulations that those will be allowed to be redeveloped. And so that three acre lot turns into three one acres. And it's it's inevitable with the housing crisis and, you know, and and what we've seen now, where we see a downturn and a dip and it may not happen, sure, all that, but eventually.
Increasing the lot size, which means you could put three septic systems on that lot.
Yeah.
And if the state said there was legislation to do that, but you had to have a town sewer.
Right.
But if you got three acres lot or bigger, why not put them?
Right. And so that's always my, you know, what, when you're trying, you know, and I keep pushing the question, what you're trying to accomplish and you change things arbitrarily or just because they seem like they would work, you know, they don't always. That's why I push the conservation subdivision to make those stronger so more people use them, but you increase the buffers, you push them back. But you want to encourage that because that one acre lot, the conservation subdivision is never going to get redeveloped.
Right.
Into a small.
What what this is actually driving at, what I think what you'll see is you will see a push more to those conservation subdivisions. And it means you conserve more, you conserve a larger tract of land and you end up with a smaller development.
Right, because.
Right, it decreases density, right. And it decreases density in those areas. And so.
I don't think you're going to get less of it. I think what you're just going to get are smaller subdivisions and more conserved land.
Instead of 55, it would be 36.
Right.
Yeah. And a lot more conservation land.
More roads?
No.
No.
No, no road. If they if they chose to still do a conservation subdivision, it would just decrease the density.
Right.
Yeah, so probably fewer.
But if we stayed with everybody just doing three acre lots, single houses, we're going to have more roads.
It would increase sprawl. I mean, the contrary to that is.
Roads are really expensive.
If they do conventional something.
But some, but the developer is responsible for that cost and their the likelihood that they're going to move that route to do it is really low.
But you look at Outlook, Boulder Drive, I mean, they, there's a lot of road infrastructure they put in there.
20 years ago.
But the prices.
They did an overlook.
But I mean, yeah, so 60, 60,000 for a lot. And now they're 220, you know, so and the road cost went from $120 a foot to $500 a foot. I mean, I'm not good at math, but, you know, they both went up exponentially, you know.
But it's, but they're not, you you're looking at one of them went up five to one and the other has gone up three to one. And. So so you've got to capitalize on that another way. Well, how do you capitalize on that? You put in less road. So you still get your 200,000 per lot. You get it on a much shorter road, which makes the math work for them. It's it's just a math equation. That's all this is.
Sure, yeah.
It's it's just a big math problem. And that's what they're looking at. And any developer is going to go at it the same way. Like, and if you look at it, who are the people that that are vehemently against this? Developers, because it means they don't get all the density that they want, which means they don't make as much money as they want.
I don't necessarily agree, but I let the voters decide who would vote. I would support that.
At the state level planners, they want density and, you know, easier. I mean, you look at that, what's the planning tool that they created to make it easier? And I mean, they're trying to streamline regulations. That's why they streamline building codes because they're trying to make it for easier for people to build as much as they possibly can because they think that's the solution to the crisis. But I don't think it is, but it's in developers, you know, they're going to do what sells and what's cheaper and most money in their pockets. So.
If you want your density, and that's always been my push, put your density in your town center area. Like, that's where it belongs.
Well, that's where I was talking about the transfer of development rights, but to do that density with no more density, you know, because you can only do so much downtown before you run out of space or available, you know, without going up.
Town center is only 252 acres, so. That's there.
So you were saying just put it to a vote?
But you also have the village districts. I let the, yeah, I I have qualms about it, but I, I let the.
I can only get behind one major project. And right now, I think we spent so much time on the conservationies and improving that, like that's where I'm going to put my.
You know, to me, kind of with Joyce, to me, this impacts a very small group in in the town, people who own property. And I think it's a big, big impact on them. So I think it might pass, but it kill, if I have 10 acres now, it's five lots now, it'll be three lots afterwards. And what the what a developer will pay me for is vastly different. If he's going to get three lots, he's going to pay me way less than he's going to pay me.
How many of those? Is there any way to find out how many people are like that?
I think the.
Yes, it's been done.
I think the longtime residents that own property are the are the ones that are going to be impacted. And that property is their 401K. You know, so I I think it's a big impact on, that's a big, big impact.
I think the challenge that you are up against is.
Okay, let's take a vote on this. We're taking a vote on each one of Andy's. Is that what you wanted?
Yes.
Want to package them? I think it's, if you take, if you go.
No, it's all together because it's part of 4.2.
Right. 4.2, well, 4.2.24 is. Bear with me here. 4.224 is the minimum lot size. 224, bear with me here, is for the, is the TC district. And what I was recommend recommending on that.
Page 14 in the zoning.
Is with the town center district. 4.2.2.4, sorry. Parents for minimum lot size, single family duplexes. Was just saying that at that point, we would be at 80,000 square feet.
So you're also including the minimum side setbacks in your.
I I put it right in there because if you look, it all ties into that table, too.
Yep, I got it. Okay, so that's the motion to advance this to the voters?
Yeah, like as a zoning, proposed zoning amendment. See if the board supports moving this forward as a proposed zoning amendment.
It becomes one of our zoning things rather than a petition or an article.
Correct.
Did you want 2.4.2.44 with the maximum building size as well?
Wait a minute.
No, no.
Did you want to talk?
Already 80,000, right?
It's on four, no, this is the building size. So under 4.2.42.
That's a several one.
It says the maximum building size, building footprint of 20,000 square feet in size. And it says within a PDU, the building footprint may increase to 70,000 square feet. To give you an idea, that's like the layout of the new building I'm building for TurboCam.
Right.
Your footprint is all is bigger than that footprint.
Right. Mixed use.
Huh? For, yeah. So you're going bigger than what I'm do, I'm working on for a manufacturing building right now that we approved. What's that?
Which wasn't allowed in that zone, but you you got a conditional use for it, right?
It was approved, yeah, as a conditional use.
I'm just saying, it's it's for, you couldn't go 70,000 with a conditional use permit, right?
But that's, this allows that. And the new recommendation in the rules is you're saying, hey, it's 50,000 unless it goes to the ZBA. Why would we not make 4.2.4 parents for the same way? So that it it has.
50,000, okay.
Right. Well, and and I gave it. This one, it says the footprint of 20,000 square feet while the PDU, the building footprint may be. while the PDU, the building footprint may be increased to seventy thousand. And I'm saying it shouldn't, it really shouldn't be more than fifty thousand. If you're going to say you don't want bigger than fifty thousand in the village district, why would you do anything bigger than that here?
I agree with that one. In fact, I had it checked off here.
Yeah.
Okay, so there are like two, two different ones.
Two. Yeah.
Essentially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you want, let's vote on the first one.
Which is the four two one parentheses one, and then the four two...
Two.
Two parentheses four. Because that will be one, um...
Okay, so that would cover the one hundred and thirty thousand feet increase in two, to two fifty. And the setbacks, fifty, fifty, and fifty.
And the...
Right?
Yeah, the four two two parents four, that's just adding eighty thousand instead of the reference to same as general residential. Is that what you were trying to add there? I just compared by that one.
Um, minimum lot size eighty thousand square feet, four two two four, um... Isn't that eighty?
It's just reference four two one for the standard, which goes back and tells you eighty thousand and gives you all the criteria for a lot. But what it does is, um, is it says, it's eighty thousand square feet, which must include sixty thousand square feet additional, oh, it, um, additional, additionally to sixty... Oh, what the heck was it?
Move back to here.
There was something, there was, oh, because minimum lot size shall increase by forty thousand. If you look at four two, it, it moves you forward from four two one parents one to four two one parents two. And there it talks about the minimum lot size for additional one-bedroom dwelling units under a common roof. The minimum lot size shall increase by forty thousand square feet. So now your eighty thousand goes to a hundred and twenty thousand.
So you don't want that in the village?
I'm saying, do you, do we, do you care to go bigger? I mean, all of a sudden, now you're starting, we're arguing over, do we go a hundred and thirty thousand in the outer area? But yet you're saying, well, we're only going to require an increase by, um, forty thousand in...
Well, that was changed in twenty twenty-two.
Forty thousand's brand new though.
Yeah, we just did that in twenty twenty-two. It used to be ten thousand, that's why we ended up with, uh, eighty units over there. Now they could only do twenty units.
Um...
With the eighty, with the forty thousand.
Crap. Uh, four two two, I'm trying to figure out where my brain was at when I did this, because apparently it just isn't lining up here, so...
I can't help with that.
Yeah, no, it's...
All right, let's, four two two four, let's leave it alone. Scrap it. Okay, Vanessa, we're back to you.
I don't know what I was...
The first one.
The first one.
Four, two, two, one, parentheses one. Vote, so that way you can...
Right, hundred and thirty thousand square feet, also the minimum, uh, frontage is two fifty, and the side setbacks are fifty, fifty, and fifty with the rear. Motion?
Well, I'll make the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Scott, yep. Roll call?
Yes.
I buy.
Capriola, no.
Tessier, no.
Yes.
Yes.
Not because I agree, because I want to vote.
It's okay. Petition or an article, it is. I see, I, I got it.
I will vote no.
Andy, can you give an explanation of why, why you want this, or why, for the change?
Why the basis?
Yeah.
I, I wrote that in there. It's, uh, it's more conducive with the master plan and defining the rural character of the town.
Okay, so that's where you want the explanation?
I don't know if I agree with that part.
Is there a better explanation?
We'll see what the, what the people say.
So that was four to... Three, wait, hold on. How many people are... I had two, two no's.
Oh, I guess so, but, yeah, two, you're right, yeah.
Did you see that thing that Donna has in front of her?
The map?
All the, lot, lot of big lots in town.
Right.
Yeah.
I...
Okay, Mr. Chairman, can we go to the next one?
Yes, we can go to the next one, which is, um... It says four two two four, right?
You guys have a deadline at ten, at ten PM, I'll fall asleep.
Well, I can extend it.
That's true.
Four two four parentheses four, every, yeah, that's the fifty thousand instead of seventy.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded by Scott. Roll call.
Wait, 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 no. Okay.
Uh, Donna made that, I think she raised her hand.
We'll do Donna, then. Give Donna some credit here, okay.
Roll call.
Pepper, yes.
Nappi, yes.
Sugi, yes. Capriola, yes.
Tessier, yay.
Yay.
Uh, yes.
And the, the basis behind that is also written out. It aligns with the rest of the standards for non-residential footprint size. Mixed use shouldn't get a larger footprint.
Okay, next one is six?
No, we're done with that. The six, sorry.
Six point one five?
The sixes are all lumped into the...
It's going to be lumped into the consultant.
Oh, okay. Oh, we're all done. See, I told you it was going to be easy.
For that part.
Before you leave that one...
Yes.
On six point two point two parentheses three.
Three, yeah, steep slopes.
I would feel more comfortable with very steep slopes. So the steep slopes would now define as fifteen percent, very steep slopes at twenty-five percent. We currently have thirty-five percent. I'm okay with twenty-five percent, but I have trouble going to fifteen percent.
So just have to put the word very, because that's a new definition.
Well, but this isn't, this isn't going to matter anyway, because we're, none of that's going forward.
Incorporated in the...
Yeah, that's being incorporated in the...
Let them build on the steep slopes.
Well, that being said, we're going to have our, try to have our first public hearing on...
The prices keep dropping on them.
December seventeenth, if we can get all this ironed out to the attorney.
Too bad.
Okay.
For that. Now we're on, now we're on...
What do you want us to do?
And B.
He puts the book away.
Can we take a five-minute bio break? Or maybe not, I guess half everybody else has gone to the restroom.
I haven't gone yet, so you and I will not share, but use A and B. Thank you.
Does that mean you, with the absence of him, you don't...
Where are we? Tell me where I go, Vanessa, I'll go.
Um, okay. We're doing the subdivision regulations, just some brief updates. Um, one of, um, we talked about...
You didn't like my little handout, Scott? You didn't like my little handout?
Um, the environmental impact assessment, I know this is one that Joyce wanted to make sure that we change in here to shell...
I actually, um, brought it forth, because I wanted all of the elements to be done, because we had one situation where we ordered an environmental assessment, and they only did a few of them. They didn't do all of them, and I just wanted them to do all the components. Um, but this is different, and I think it's actually pretty good. Does that make sense, Vanessa?
Oh, do you want me to put, um, all shall be required, instead of just...
All components shall be required.
Unless waived?
I'm not putting anything about waiving in there, come on now.
They can always ask for a waiver.
They can always ask for a waiver, yeah.
Um, but if people still want to go ahead with requiring it, I'm fine with that, too.
All components shall be required, first medal?
Well, but the way I read what, um, you did at the last meeting is that you're request, requiring environmental impact assessments for all subdivisions.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm fine with that.
Okay.
But that, that wasn't my intent. My intent was that we make sure we get all these components. Because I think it, um, I think it was a young road, I don't think they had done fish and wildlife. And there's something else they hadn't done. I know fish and wildlife for sure.
But all, I mean, this is just me speaking to the board, that if you do all components, and then there's no wiggle room to say...
I would agree with that, all components.
Everybody okay with that change?
Yeah.
I'm just calling eight. B.
Um...
Four B.
We're on four B. Now we're on page thirty-two, which is the third page. Um, talking about active and substantial development and substantial completion. Um, the town owner engineer wanted to have it, um, more furnished up, so he has, um, suggested this change.
But this doesn't, as I read it at least, it doesn't say, as long as you do the infrastructure, you don't have to have done anything on your building.
Right, to be in compliance with the RSA.
Compliance, is that the way it should be?
Mm-hmm.
I know Stratum actually had mentioned foundations, too. So, really?
You've got to talk to that guy.
I can't, I mean, if someone wants to subdivide a piece of land and never build on it, to make them, make that land non-compliant in the future somehow, because you didn't put a foundation on it?
I thi, I agree with that. If you're going to subdivide property, but you're going to sell the lots off one by one, you put the infrastructure and the roads in first.
Right, infrastructure.
You don't put the foundations in.
No.
Yeah, okay.
You know, if you're doing it for your kids...
Times I've done.
If regulations are good today, and you think you're going to subdivide for a kid, and eighteen years from now, he's going to build, you know, but you never put a foundation in, so you're not grandfathered in?
If you're selling the lots, they, they want to put their own foundation, and they want to put where they want to put it.
Right.
So...
Ben. Well, I still like that issue with the twenty-year-old subdivision, apparently it's still good, even though they didn't do anything, so...
Yeah, they're vested in putting that in. And that's RSA stuff, you know, where you get, RSA six seven four thirty-nine, you know, active and substantial. It's laid out in there, so I think he's probably trying to get him close to that.
Okay. She's in a, she wants to get out of here for some reason.
Expiration of approved plans, we just wanted to firm that up, because there was a question about that. Um, there's a new section in here, um...
Let me just ask, why don't we just make people submit a new application, rather than finding they can get an extension?
Uh, because we don't want to go through the process again, right? If the regulations don't change...
I think it's part of the RSA, too.
Why we're going to look at another application?
Let's put in a fee on that.
For what?
I'm working on your fee schedule, I see you. I see you.
Fee is different than a new...
Yeah, I understand that, but if we have to do it, I'm just saying.
So let me, like, um, along that line, we keep, we've, um, we've kicked the can down the road where we have reapproved or extended applications where afterward we have changed rules on it. But because we allow them to at least get the first one in, and then when you look at, um, what deems active or substantial work, um, it, like, some of it's just, they're like, they've opened up the ground, it's active and substantial, and you're like, meh, like...
Stratum also has a rule, you can't just move piles of dirt around. They actually put those words in there, like some people would do, see, yeah, look at all the dirt I pile, I put this pile here, and then one here, and then one here.
But it, it says we, we can allow up to one. I don't think, I can't think of one anywhere where we've allowed another one, the regulations changed.
Um...
There's a recent one, it, it's a case-by-case basis, it's up to the board, you don't have to grant it.
The recent last one we done was Dove.
The Dove development has gone past its...
Yeah, it's, it's passed. And the regulation has changed in and around that area substantially.
Yeah, but the...
Well, they had, because they had a ZBA that, that was going with it, but...
I mean, we...
From that regulation.
BBA is expired.
But now it's expired, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think that's the only one. I mean, I know we kicked that cell tower for five years, right?
Right, we finally said no.
But nothing changed, you know?
So, um...
Until it changed.
This new section I put in here for modi, modification of approved plans. So this is kind of what we were talking about a little bit ago. Um, I originally looked at it, um, from Exeter, because they have that in their plans. But then the, um, town engineer kind of beefed it up a little bit more for us, um...
Which one, monumentation?
Um, so it's eight point ten, modification of approved plans.
Yeah, okay.
Um... Yeah, because I, I wanted that in there, because there's been obviously questions of what is, what's not. Um, I'm open to adding things to it, but I figured, we don't have it there now, got to start somewhere.
That looks good.
Monumentation, um...
What page is that?
I'm sorry, we're on page forty-six.
So, can I ask a question on that? Because I, I always like to say, okay, if I play this out with a scenario. So, uh, you know, like, we have a field change for a building. It would be a minor site design modification, it goes, would go to you, and you would just approve it, and then...
Well, if the campground's wanted to become a cattle ranch, that could be a site change.
Well, that would be a, that would be, uh, well, that would be a bit of a stretch.
So usually, a minor design change could be approved by building permits, or building departments, like, when you guys, if you see something that's not... Yeah.
That's a tough one, you know, boards have different levels of, uh, what they want to give up and look at. I mean, sometimes...
What I was saying right here, that...
It is dated with small little changes, and you want to determine that things, you know...
Well, I guess, where, what's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is where's the threshold, or what is the threshold?
Right, and then we talk about this behind the scenes all the time, because I don't, we don't know what you're comfortable with, and everything's so unique, it's like...
So an example of a minor design change is relocating purposes, proposed utilities, relocating driveways or houses. I don't necessarily like among others, because that could lead to other things.
Well, that's why I asked.
Strike that, but, um, yeah, if there's others that you want to put in there, um...
You know, like up here, you know, there was a corner lot, and the driveway worked better on one road than the other.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, there's really no impact, other than you can do a drive under garage as opposed to not. You know, so those are kind of minor things that, I mean, I don't think they even came in and asked, but... If someone were, to be able to do a minor.
Right, right. So are we striking among others, or are we good as... Yeah.
I think that's appropriate, yeah. Thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, I don't like among others. Same with the major design change.
Okay.
Relocation of proposed driveways or houses. Well, I don't really like the house here. I'm just going to move it way over there. But see, and the house thing would be, I don't, I don't know how that one works, because if you do a subdivision, you're not doing house locations. The builder can put it anywhere within the setbacks. I, you know, the building inspector, we make sure they meet setbacks with a foundation certification, so the house location would never be a thing, you know? Other than mixed use, commercial developments, those things, you know? But even those, if they still meet the setbacks, how much do they change unless they change drainage significantly that you'd want to see them again? So, you know, maybe it's staff and chair make a decision on whether it goes to full plan or not, you know?
Well, that's just why I ask, because I, I always try to play it out with, what's the scenario you encounter?
Right.
Okay, here's, here's one we encounter. How do, is that, does it meet the litmus test?
He wanted a field change. The, Bending Brooks thought it was a field change, too. I didn't feel like either one of those were, and there's nothing in our standards to say that, and I'm like, mm.
But I, like, you may be thorough enough to do that, but I think someday Vanessa's going to win the lottery and move on from Barrington and go do something spectacular. So whoever moves into that seat, how do they know?
Or if I'm not there, or other people aren't there, yeah.
How do they know what that threshold is? And John's threshold for something may be very different than what Jamie's is, you know?
Well, I think, I think we've already experienced some of that.
I, I think it depends by the board, too.
Yeah.
Then you could get a hundred and...
I think you have to take a leave from the board. If the board is unhappy with something, they say something, and then it shifts the needle a little bit.
Okay, well, we'll leave it as is and see how, I guess, how it plays out for minor and major.
I think it's fine.
See what were some other things?
I just like to know where the boundaries are for my lanes, like, that way, if I'm going to get slapped, I know when I'm about to get slapped for it.
Um, so fire protection, this is, um, page forty-eight. I'm not sure what page it pulls in your thing, but, um, adding the eleven point six three. Um, any subdivision of five or more lots requiring thirty thousand gallon fire system located within the thousand durable feet of each residence. I had the fire chief review that, he said that sounded good. Same with the names of subdivision streets and address thing, talking with Tiffany, who does a lot of the E nine one one, as well as fire chief, they have a, like, little committee, they proposed, um, these changes. If anybody doesn't have a page, I haven't, looks like I have an extra page in here, so...
So, I, I, I kind of straw poll on the board, and I'm sure I know how the fire people will go, but the rest of us, general population, or, or former hillbillies, whatever you want to call us. Like, I really struggle with the idea of imposing the cost of a fire system. I guess maybe if my house were on fire, I might feel differently about it. But I look at the construction of materials they use, and I've badgered Rick about this, so he, he, I'm not saying anything that I wouldn't say directly to Rick. and I've badgered Rick about this, so he, he, I'm not saying anything that I wouldn't say directly to Rick. I'm like, yep, with a volunteer fire department, they're spectacular, you've never lost a foundation yet. And when you look at, like, construction materials nowadays with OSB board and the various materials, and, and you spray foam and you look at engineered trusses, they burn in a fraction of the time. That, yeah, EVs, they burn in a fraction of the time that they used to. I think by ti- by time you even can hook up to them, you're, you're really, all you're doing is you're trying to sprinkle it down and make sure you don't spread to anybody else.
Yeah. And he's aware of that and said that, and even as, uh, staffing drops on the fire department, you know, we rely more heavily on, you know, uh, mutual aid.
Yeah.
Um, and I think the cisterns are for the backup water, they get the first hit on the truck and then they gotta go to their lot. Right, um, the problem is, and the change in the regulation is because it says at the discretion of, and so there's no clear, uh, specification for anybody coming in, this guy doesn't need one, this guy does. So to put it in there fair and equitable for everybody, it, it makes it less of a bone of contention, it's, it's a, it's a known factor when you come in to do a subdivision, um, as opposed to, is the fire chief, whether it's Rick or somebody down the road, gonna make me do it on this one or not, I don't know, we'll see when we get there.
I just think there's gonna be a huge burden on the flip side of that, because somebody's gotta own it.
Oh, yeah? Well, town actually.
Town's gonna end.
Yeah, the fire department has to maintain them.
You know, I, I started this meeting talking about taxes and I'm gonna come right back around the horn on that.
Well, I think the fire pond. I'll take you on the cisterns.
I'm like, put in a fi- a pond, like, if you really want to do it.
It became a liability issue with the ponds. You know, some kid falls in and, you know, drowns.
They're great for skating on in the wintertime.
Not mine, it's smooth, just enough that.
Who's the last, sorry, a pond frozen around here.
Are you making a recommendation that we strike that?
Well, I guess that, I'm, that's what I said, I kind of wanted to straw poll the board and figure out how people feel about it, because I'm like.
Yeah, let's have a vote.
I just want to say, I've been pushing for this one because it's arbitrary and, uh, not equally distributed amongst anyone who comes in. And that's why.
It's not that you're pro cistern, it's that you want something in documentation.
I mean, that's like saying, why have minimum, why have minimum lot sizes, just let a developer come in and pro- propose something and then you guys will decide what you think minimum lot sizes would be. I know, some people would love that and you can do that, but, um, that's how this is laid out now.
So why five houses?
Uh, because that's what the Rural Fire Code NFPA blah something, something describes as rural fire safety.
Doesn't anybody have a real problem besides the?
Let's take a vote.
Oh, sorry.
Look at this, it's a huge cost that gets passed down to the homeowner.
Yeah.
Hundred grand.
That's supposed to say that.
No, I don't have.
I was having a roll call, you want a roll call?
Thousand dollars to his house.
Built a house in Danville for Barrington cop, and when they sold him the land, they didn't tell him that he had to have a sprinkler.
Yeah.
And it was required, so that became a twelve thousand dollar extra.
It's illegal.
So I just want to vote for something consistent, so can we just vote for this tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we include eleven point six parentheses three to the subdivision regulations, seconded by anybody?
Sure, I'll second it.
We'll poll.
Keep it as same, shepherd eye.
I'll vote in favor of it.
Okay.
So GI, capello eye.
Test your eye.
All right.
Okay, you're good.
Um, the next one on page fifty-two, this kind of, this came up, but recently, um, about the village center should be
town center.
Town center, so that is a change in the table.
This reminds me, remember the discussion we had about the wording, what was the wording before in that? Village, not village district, village senate or something.
Village center.
Just with the village.
It skipped over.
To be, as you guys have said, was the town center and.
Village district.
Village district, so.
All right.
Cleaning up that one.
Problem with that?
No.
Okay.
Um, next page, um, adding, um, more to the width for driveway design standards, uh, this was covered by the engineer.
Yeah, I have, I have a issue with this one.
Okay.
I'm looking for the, the driveway standards, I think our driveway standard is twelve to eighteen, and this is a thousand feet and he's requiring twelve. So to me, that's too small, if you're gonna do a thousand foot driveway, you know, our, you know, right now, our selection policy is sixteen, two and two for roads so the fire equipment can get by, so I'm thinking if you get a thousand feet, you should, you shouldn't be allowed to put a twelve footer in there. I think it should be something wider.
You want a road?
I don't want a road, but I want something where fire equipment can go back and forth, so.
A pull off.
There's gonna, isn't there something about pull offs?
They're required to have pull offs anyway.
Yeah, but. The next page, isn't that where it talks about?
You can't pass on a twelve foot road, you can't pass on a sixteen foot road, that's why it's gonna be sixteen, two and two with shoulders with my beer.
Whether it's fire equipment, even people driving, you know, getting by each other.
You haven't driven in Italy, my friend.
They have smaller cars.
I think, I just think twelve, I, I'd go wider, just because I think a thousand feet is a pretty long driveway, and you're getting damn close to a road, so.
I don't, I don't know if you, I don't know what you could, authority you can have on driveway, so I don't, I don't know, I mean, you can.
Well, our color policy is twelve to eighteen, we can require.
Yeah, I mean.
So twelve is on the absolute low end, that we're talking about now.
So why don't you change, why is the minimum ten then, if you're gonna, if you're gonna say.
Twelve is twelve to eighteen.
But it says residential driveways shall be ten to eighteen feet wide.
Yeah, because if you've got a tw- twenty foot driveway, you know, with, you know, it's ten feet wide. If you set back as forty feet from the road, you can put a ten foot driveway to your house, but.
So ten to eighteen is our standard, and for a thousand feet, you're asking for twelve.
So would, then it should be eighteen.
It should be on the high end.
I think it should be in the higher end.
I, I recommend.
I think to solve the problem.
I think that goes against our rural character.
Right, and to solve the problem, it's a pull off of the fire truck, right?
Which, which is under, per extended driveways, which is on the next page.
That's in there, I can't remember.
The next page.
I saw it.
Is it this?
Let's take a straw poll, where you start, wider, no? Andy's no, you don't care, it's late in the day, you don't care.
Same.
I don't know if the experience you all have.
You say no.
I'm a wait nighter, I'll go all night.
Yeah.
You're twelve, stay loose.
Yeah.
Come on over here, twelve.
I go wider, I mean, I just feel like we're always dealing with these six roads and.
A thousand feet, you're trying to drive a fire truck down there, and the tank is trying to get by you to give you more water.
Yeah.
How can you have?
I go one.
Wider.
Twelve.
Twelve, I'm wider, so I think that right now, what are you, are you?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, so what do we got, three and three, we're deadlocked?
Yeah, no.
I, I think our pull offs addresses any concern.
I agree.
Yeah.
I.
So three and three.
Four and three.
Well, it's up to you.
No, it's three to four.
Wider.
Uh, wide, sixteen, not eighteen, but maybe sixteen.
It's a road.
Hold up, what's, what's happening?
We're at sixteen feet.
Okay.
Motion for sixteen feet.
All driveway sixteen feet.
I made that motion, seconded by Scott.
Okay.
Roll call.
Sepharon, naff nay.
Masushi nay. Capello eye.
Test your eye.
All right.
Because this is driveways that are longer than the thousand.
Thousand feet, that's all we're talking about, four to three.
Yep.
Hey, let's change that.
Okay.
Sixteen feet.
Somebody needs to be in charge of enforcing that we've got to make sure they maintain that sixteen for the life of the property, you can't have stuff growing in.
Yeah.
Well, that's like our.
Like I said, no rural character.
On the next page, by the way, says twelve again.
Yeah, it says twelve, include two foot gravel shoulders, that should probably say the same, right?
It didn't say gravel shoulders.
I'd get rid of, I'd get rid of it in twelve, three, two, one, one, and just leave it in twelve, three, two, seven, because it's already there, extended driveways, but.
Yeah, it is redundant.
Just take it out, take it out.
Take out the. From the wind part?
Twelve point three, point two.
One.
Yeah, just delete it.
Delete it.
Well, I mean, Krebs, now that you can land in C seven on the thing, I mean.
C five.
It's been voted, Andy, give it up, let it go, let it go, Andy, it's done.
Yeah, we're changing the neck, you got your three acres, they get their three mile wide driveways, come on.
They got their, their, their landing strip. Somebody's gonna mistakenly be looking at the lights down there and think it's a landing strip.
Let's.
Vanessa says go.
Make sure, twelve, three, two, um, parentheses, seven, B, is now twelve, uh, sixteen feet, including.
Gravel shoulders.
Aren't you just?
So you got a twenty foot wide driveway.
No.
No, come on. It's included. So.
Twelve, two and two. No, that's not what he's saying.
No.
He's saying sixteen, two and two, it's a twenty foot wide driveway.
Yeah. What the shoulders, I'm gonna go down a little bit.
Yeah, I would too.
This width of sixteen feet and include two foot, it doesn't say included in that, does it?
The previous didn't say.
Look, I know you Q-tips need more road to get down, but you know.
Maybe we should get some lighting too, so that that thousand feet is well lit.
Like, when you go, when you go to the freezer section?
You're lost, you know, you're not gonna win every one of them, you're not gonna win every one.
What if one of the hose dragons has to walk up the driveway?
Some people get a little testy, they're gonna go their way.
You grab a thing out and just leave sixteen?
Well, I think it's, we leave it as written. We leave it as twelve feet and two foot shoulders.
If, if it's twelve feet or two foot shoulders, I'm okay leaving it twelve.
All right.
The previous one didn't have shoulders on it.
All right, all right, twelve and.
I'm okay with twelve.
Okay.
Okay.
Common driveways.
Common driveways is wrong, because it's three lots.
They're not served more than three lots.
It's, it can only serve three lots.
Current regulations, right, three lots.
Oh, two lots is right then, so it can't serve more than two lots, that's true.
All right, no more.
What's happening?
Right now, we allow three.
Three lots.
We allow three right now.
So it should say served no more than three lots.
Yes.
Correct, yeah, more than three.
Oh, wait, wasn't one, recently we talked about one like this for four lots?
It didn't.
No, Young Road, we have two with three lots.
No, the very.
Talking about the conceptual that came before you.
We did.
Yeah.
And remember I pointed out about eight regulations that it didn't comply with?
Well, it's.
I mean, up here? That's not a driveway, it's a private road.
Yeah, that's a private road and not a driveway.
So you get the four, just like we did in Mary Hill.
Uh, that's right, I, thirty foot road, it's still, there's a whole bunch of things that.
Yeah, I know, love.
Okay, so it changed out to three lots?
Yep.
Three lots.
Um, page fifty-nine, talk about private roads servicing fewer than four lots.
Is it driveway?
Right. Wait. So it used to be two, or three?
Yeah, it's four lots right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mary Hill, just cleaned up wording, didn't change.
Yeah, okay, we're good?
Four to three, so.
We're good? Say we're good.
Three and one. Does anybody have a problem, um, paving may be waived?
That's up to the planning board.
Okay.
For you guys to do that. Um, the next two pages.
We're just got a lighting plan, we're okay.
Was, was my proposal.
Wait, you just turned hostile, man.
It's because it's, it's after nine o'clock, it's after nine o'clock, that's what happens. It's after nine o'clock, and it's like gremlins.
Nothing good happens after nine p.m., apparently.
Um, and then the last one, um, the next two pages are just strike through, that's what I proposed, but we moved it to a different section, and then, um, yield plan on page ninety, a definition.
Yield plan was a little weak, I thought, we, we wanted reasonable and practical in there, I think, so.
The court decision was.
I would say let's leave that.
Reasonable.
Feasible and realistic.
They're gonna be working on the yield, didn't they say they were gonna be working on yield plan?
They're doing zone, this is subdivision.
Right, but then we could take what they come up with.
Because you can change this anytime, I mean, one public hearing, as long as you have ten days.
We already said, elsewhere, we said reasonable and practical, I would put it in here, just because if we, we always have a problem with that, they give us a yield plan that's not practical.
That is reasonable.
No, reasonable in, in realistic, uh, realistic and feasible, the two court, the, the court decision.
Dangerously subjective words.
Well, Supreme Court.
Wordage when that's done.
Realistic and feasible?
Yeah.
All right, that's all we have for.
Justice appointed by.
So I didn't send you subdivision.
Well, one's going to jail in Paris.
Talk about those.
I wasn't going to, except the fire chief wanted me to make sure that these get changes with some things that are happening in our office, and the modification of site plans.
Because I.
Or, um, modification of plans.
Because I do have, like, subdivision items, but I just figured, like, when we had initially talked about it, we weren't gonna put anything forward, but if you're gonna have a hold, if we're gonna hold a warrant on it, or a, um, not a warrant, a, uh, public hearing.
Right now, yeah.
Like, it, I mean, I think it'd be worth discussing, um.
Because he wants to do cul-de-sacs and hammerheads.
So the cul-de-sacs, I looked in the cul-de-sac, because the road agent also wanted the cul-de-sacs changed, however, the diagram has to be changed for, for that, in order for that to match, so I need to find someone that can draw me a circle, I guess, I don't know. But you change the one thing, you have to change that whole thing, so.
Butterfly effect.
Yeah, but that shouldn't be a stuff block.
These guys, he has a designer in the office that can do stuff like.
I know, I, I think I'm gonna ask them about it.
Just call the town engineer and tell them what they want, and they'll, and they'll be part of our regulations, I mean, what's the, they've been talking about this for years, my god, just do it.
Why, why you complain when you can get them to change it so easily?
Yeah.
They'll do a jury for you and we'll stick it in the ring.
But they could look at it later, so.
So do you think they're coming in with more changes soon?
Um, I think we're gonna, we were gonna wait until after the vote, unless there's, I mean, Andy had asked, um, if we only have one public meeting for changes, we can do that as well, just depends.
I mean, I don't have any heartburn or consternation to waiting on it, if you would prefer to, to, to wait, I mean, or if, like, you want, I'll, I can formalize it and send it to you in an email. Why you give me the side eye?
I'm so tired, I'm sorry. It's after nine, it's, I'm so sorry. Um, yeah, if you want to send it to me, I'm just trying to think, like, if we're okay with adopting these, and then we can do it the next work session.
Like I said, I'm not, I'm.
That's the back of our.
It's not gonna be, I don't feel like it's earth shattering, we've lived with them as long as we have.
We would do these and then the road and, and yours.
I've got these right here, I've been carting them around for, like, a month and a half.
So at December third, what we talked about tonight, um, just make sure that I had the ten days, I only had nine days to advertise it, um, there's no one here to talk about it, but, um, so we'll adopt this on the third with the rest of our case files that we have that time, and then on the seventeenth of December, we'll go over, we'll have our first public hearing, um, for zoning amendments.
So do we have a lot of, uh, applications or anything on the third?
No, so it's a pretty, we don't have new applications, a lot, it's a lot of there's a little bit with some more, I mean, there's no.
No?
Yes.
Yes, they are back.
Sort of. They want to talk about the hydrological study.
Who's that?
I thought we resolved that by telling them.
They didn't like my answer.
Didn't like my answer.
Well, they didn't like the board's answer, so I'm like, okay, come back.
I missed.
There, um, so the Oak Hill, it wants to come back, um, well, they're, they're continuing anyways to the next meeting, but they want to talk about the need for the hydrological study. Um, so.
Remember the concern was, you, you raised a concern about the wetlands, everything's gonna drain.
So they were like, well, why?
And I had mentioned the adjacent wells there from the.
I gave them all of our, you know, what's required in the hy- hydrological study, and I said these were the two main things that the board was most concerned about, and then.
And what do they want to talk about? I mean, that was what we said, I mean, we're gonna change our minds?
Maybe.
They're gonna try to.
Right.
So.
Oh. Oh.
They may, they may, don't say what they might, they may have good information, it's possible.
So hopefully our.
I mean, our agenda should be light, I would think.
Okay, sounds good.
Question before we finish, last time I pointed out the error on that four A diagram, did that get addressed?
That, um.
Yeah.
Right.
It's the zoning type.
Have your note, no, because I think that went with one of the, the, um, yeah, the common driveway, so it's like in that same like table thing, like you can't just.
No, no, this is the, you remember the figures on the below, it said two lots, where our regulations say three lots, the little thing is, the little fine print under there that you can barely read, is, is incorrect.
Yes. I had to get a new diagram somehow, it's once again, the same thing with the cul-de-sac, it's all like this one.
Who makes diagrams well, who's got some good PDF skills?
And speaking of skills.
If I had time, I could do it, I don't know.
The chart you had, there was a chart that you showed.
I'm gonna do a bathroom design.
Residential yellows on the other line.
Yeah, just making the shape of the toilet.
Can you all missions and baths? Cul-de-sacs, not so much.
All right, four C.
I think we should discuss those, I didn't get to it tonight, and I certainly will put it extended it, so.
Well, these may go quickly.
Even if it doesn't make it.
Okay, well, we can go up to the next, uh.
We're going to four C?
Four C, um, I'm gonna turn this over to Scott, um, had some, a resident.
Yeah, so this is.
Send in some items.
Oh, okay.
So these were just things he suggested. Uh, so the first one, four one, five one, four one C, um, it's just a spelling change.
Yep. Oh, okay.
That's easy, good.
Nine, three, one, um, it references the wrong study.
Oh, it should be nine, six, yeah. Or is it nine? Sure you're right, so.
Okay.
What? Nine, three, one references the wrong study.
I think it's easier, the four C, I'm okay with all of them.
Well, nine, six is the, uh, nine, six is an exception, yeah.
All these I was okay with.
Did you review them? You know where they came from, right?
Oh, okay.
I looked at them, I looked at them, I'm okay with all of them.
Oh, all right.
So would you like me to make more zoning articles from this? This is where this comes from, too.
I would caution, these came from Mr. Jeffries, and these have been brought up probably fifteen times in the last seven years. And the lawyer always comes back and saying they're not accurately represented, I mean, some of them are changes that the planning board could make, but some of them are in, intentional recreation of ordinances that he wants.
Okay, I'm just bringing them forward.
I mean, he did it when I was on the planning board, and then he did it when I became zoning administrator, and he usually approaches everybody in due time to try to institute some of these changes. And I'm not saying all of them blankly are bad or good, but they're, some of them have significant language changes that have impacts that are not, you know, hey, let's go from five to seven. It's, um, you know, changing definitions of lots and stuff has impact that he's, that he defined as, um, substantial.
Why should we just go through this quickly?
I, I recommend going through it and just blankly saying, I read them and I'm good with them all, cause I, I think that some of them have implications that, you know, you may wanna consider.
Okay, four, one, two. Lot frontage and definition, so adding which shall also have some street frontage. So. Can read this.
I don't know, I mean, one of the questions I would have is how many lots are impacted by the changes he's proposing? Cause, cause like when I read access to the lot shall not be by right of way across another owner's property, I, like.
That's like.
I'm assuming there's probably a few.
You just approved those four lots of going across someone else's property, that would not be, and he, you know, he doesn't believe that there's any exception that you or the zoning board can make to go around that regulation once you impose it. That's, that's the impetus of.
If you look at, there's the, the one which, the one we just approved, do you mean the one we looked at for design review?
Yes, I mean, the, the Mary Hill one.
Yeah, they have.
It's just a design review.
That wasn't overruled.
Using a right of way to go across someone else's property to get the lots, that's what he's trying to impose here, because he has a right of way through his property. Right, I mean, they're, they're specific and intentional, that's why I wanted to bring it up.
That's a private road, not a driveway.
That it was okay for us crossing.
Nevermind, but it's still a right of way.
Doesn't align with.
Right of way defined by the state is, you know, it can be, it can be, this is a right of way, you know?
Yep.
Okay, let's get rid of that one.
Aren't we get rid of that?
Yes. You know, cause one twenty-five is a right of way, so to say that you can't take access to another property from a right of way would, would, I mean, by my limited understanding is you couldn't use one twenty-five to access another piece of property, cause it's a right of way. It's not, you don't own it in fee.
It's, it's, yeah, that makes sense.
We may wanna just send all of these to Laura, and then she's gonna.
Yeah, I mean, if you.
We can't even think about it.
I, so I, I mean, I think we can probably run through them, but some of them I think we should definitely kick.
If you're thinking they're good, but if you're gonna give every resident town the ear of the lawyer for every, you know, it's just, you should.
Well, that's why I say I think we should go through them, and then the ones that we have questions on, we should kick to the.
Do you feel like these have ever been definitively addressed?
Uh, probably a couple, I can't, I won't speak to every single one of them specifically, but all the nine point six ones, probably five times in my short existence here. Uh, she's made some comment whether.
Let's get officially done, that way we can say, what, done.
Yeah, that's, I'm kinda with you.
But some of them are opinion based, changing words and language, not that they're not necessarily illegal, it's the impact of the change and what it would affect. It may not be on its face value, a simple word change as opposed to, like right of way, if you could, like, for instance, the person has a right of way across his property to access someone else. The, this language would prevent that person from ever accessing their property through his property, cause it's a right of way. So I mean, that's specific and intentional language, I don't know if that's it.
This is, this is new, new lots though.
Right.
If you got a right of, this thing right of ways can't be changed, so he's only talking about when you're creating a new lot.
Where does it say that?
It doesn't say that.
Well, I mean.
I mean, you're making assumptions, that's what I'm saying, I've been, I've done this once or twice, and so that's why I'm hesitant and, you know, I'm hesitant.
That, you can't do that anyway, we would, we would not approve that as a board.
The one, the one we just did, you didn't like because, you know, bisected the property and.
I still don't like it.
Yeah.
But this is, this kind of.
They're making some arg, I, they're saying that they can put in like four times the density, which I really would question all that anyway, I'd have to go look at it, but.
You and I have the same problem, I wanted to go down the right of way, we didn't, none of us liked it, but if he proves that it doesn't cover the land.
How about the road?
Forget about that.
But that's, yeah, not, that's not relevant.
This would kind of address that, I mean, it would, it would say you can't access a piece of, you can't access a property. Go right away for another property, so for a new lot, where you're creating a new lot, this would be zoning.
Uh huh.
Or was it subdivision, what's a subdivision or?
But this is under definitions, this is not in the establishment.
Do not put a private road?
Well. So what you would have to do is you would have to say, you would have to say lot frontage and definition, lot change for anything created after the date voted in. That's the only way you could make that relevant.
Case though, right, that's all is the case. It's, it, it applies going forward from the day of the vote.
Not when you go and then re, reduce the exceptions, like for lots created before, like you did with the nine point six stuff.
Right.
And that just hasn't been challenged yet, but remember when you took out the exception for lots created before X on the nine point six?
Yeah.
So you, you, you do it.
That was rock song.
But this doesn't prevent it from one twenty-five, access to this lot shall not be by right of way across another's property, does anyone's property cross one twenty-five?
Yeah, so you own, if it's, if, like, one section of one twenty-five is fee ownership by the state, so they own it, so you couldn't cross their property, right? Cause that's, you've got a right of way to go across their property, so that would be restrictive. And other parts that are not in fee ownership by the state, the abutting property owners to the center line of the road, and the state has a right to pass and repass, so you would have, there's underlying property rights there. That you potentially, I just don't understand, where's, what's the problem we're fixing again? And I mean, what are we trying to address without, I mean, to, I don't know.
I'm assuming it's, there's something around, there are some lots somewhere that are, he has concern about being developed.
Well, there's a Supreme Court decision that he took towards the town in one.
That was in town, that was in Barrington, that was the Garvey lot behind, uh, the Dove, where there was confusion about whether to allow them to further subdivide a lot that had a restriction for only two lots on it. And so it's kind of an end around of should you, would you, could you, until it goes to court.
But this circles back to the conversation I have all the time that we should have, that the deed should be reviewed before anything comes before the board.
By whom?
The Eastman case, and there was another Eastman case, exactly what this court said. Whether it's the town lawyer, or, and I mean, not to throw more work onto Vanessa, but that the deed should always be reviewed before somebody comes forward with it to make sure there are not restrictions or covenants in place. So that they can't bring something forward that creates a civil matter, you create an unnecessary burden on the public with some of these applications.
Well, they got relief from the ZBA.
But the ZBA gave relief where the deed was restricted in what they should do.
But if it wasn't legal to restrict it, you need to be a lawyer to read that deed and decide if that's legal and would it go to court and hold up? I mean, that's why we specifically don't, right, but that's specifically why we don't read deeds, because no one is qualified to read those deeds and determine, like, I pulled, use a perfect example, Carol Gould's deed says she owns everything. Everybody else's deed down there says they own some of it.
Yeah.
Who, who's gonna do the deed research back to nineteen thirty-eight, when that was established, to see who owns what and how it played out?
It should be a requirement of the property owner, property owner, I mean, I hate to pass.
I mean, and you don't wanna put a sister in, but you're gonna do six years worth of deed research on some of these messy things?
If it's messy, then you, it should be cleaned up. Like, that's like anybody that goes out and wants to, that buys some like town owned piece of property, and then they have to go clean up the deeds. The parcel that I acquired for TurboCam, uh, that abuts Route nine, we had to go do an enormous amount of deed, deed research, like a hundred years of.
But that was a condition of the sale.
I wouldn't say it was a condition of the sale, you want it to always take clean title, so you do the effort, you do the work to get that done.
Right, but I'm thinking of other towns' old properties, there was a condition of the sale that you cleaned up, whatever, you could have, if it wasn't a condition of the sale, you could have come in and gotten a building permit and done what you wanted without doing that deed research. You chose to, and I, you know, it's honorable and right of you, but I'm saying, it, it wouldn't be, there'd be nobody here to enforce that deed, I don't, I don't, I just don't understand, I don't see how it could ever be done. In a fair and equitable way, that I'm researching your deed and I'd come up with a decision saying, oh, you can't do that. Like, I'll give you one, planning board says, and you put in the deed that no further subdivision, you know, I don't think that's legal, I don't think that would ever hold up in court, and then you're pushing people to take the town to court to then further subdivide. Or, you know, no living space in this area type deed restrictions, I just don't see it.
That was a deal they made, they wouldn't have to set aside any conservation land, and they restricted the deeds, they couldn't subdivide, that was an agreement, it was an agreement the parties.
But for the town staff or the planning board to re, research deeds and then deem what's legal and right, I'm, that's what, that's the slippery slope that I'm talking about.
But we went through that, if the applicant offers something, it's more than just quiet, do we accept, it's a done deal.
Yeah, that's it.
Well, the, future regulations change.
No, deals, deals are deal.
So if you have five acre lots today, and the future planning board has two acre lots, they can never subdivide that?
That's a good thing.
If it's a lot of record, if it goes to three acres, and you have a lot of record now as two acres, it's two acres, it's still a built up lot.
But going the other way, when it's five acres.
I feel like we, we can't give this the attention it needs.
I don't think so.
It's too late in the.
Ben, Benworth is gone?
Well, I think we have to look at it when we're finished.
We're approaching our tenth.
Third, we can spend two hours on this on the third of December.
I'll do some, uh, some more homework.
Do you?
I have a quick question, continue this discussion at the third meeting, just wanna make sure so I don't get, so I get it on the agenda correctly.
You wanna vote on that?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Do you want me to type these up and send them to you?
By the third.
Oh, wait, no, not by the third, um.
I'll send them to you earlier if you promise to respond before Thanksgiving.
Nope, cause I'm out. In Arizona, so.
She's bringing a computer, so.
I am.
She's gallivanting, Andy.
I know, I'm a little. Town, all these town employees just living the life of luxury.
Endless, endless time off, that's what we get.
Yeah.
That was, we negotiated for it.
If anybody's ready.
Second.
Did you move?
Shepherd eye.
Fake Vanessa.
For adjourned? No?
I just an update, I'd like to do an update, um, it was about a year ago. We're, we're not finished yet.
One meeting.
It's about.
Attention.
A year ago, um, a person came in front of us about childcare. And what's happened since then, she did get her license, but Connor and I got together, we meet regularly, and we started a Barrington childcare cooperative, which has also surrounded Northwood, um, in homes, have come to us.
Okay.
And meet once a month, so I, keep in mind when these projects come in, you know, these different developments.
The state regulations have just changed too, for the home care, right?
Yep.
Just about anybody can do it, and they don't have to go before the planning board for site plan review.